Thank you, Sue. I, most of this has all been covered, so I will go to the one last item that I wanted to say something about is that we did have Kids' Day last, a couple of weeks ago. We had over a thousand parents and kids that attended. We had approximately 25 organizations there. I'm kind of guessing at that number a bit, but there was quite a few, from churches to public entities. We also had probably over 20 to 25 donations from the businesses around town, including the city, including their recreation department. So, the love was spread everywhere, so it was really nice, everybody had a good time. And that's all I've got today. So, let's move on to presentations. The first presentation today is from Brian Shinone and Rick Dean. Did I pronounce that name right?
Shinone.
Shinone, okay. I'm gonna have to put an "I" on there for me. And Rick Dean, Siskiyou County Office of Emergency Services. It's an update with the mill fire and the cleanup.
Right ahead, Mr. Shinone.
All right. Well, thank you for having us here, council members. So, Brian Shinone, Siskiyou County OES Director. What I have today for you is kind of where we're at and where we're moving forward to, and then Rick Dean will speak on the actual cleanup part of it. But, in case you haven't heard, we did, there was an appeal for the FEMA declaration for the heat dome through California, and it was denied again. So, that is dead in the water. There will not be a federal declaration for the mill fire. This is now a state incident. And, so, moving forward, it will be a CDAA, California Disaster Assistance Act, which is what we have been funding through this, through our trailer program and some of our other things. So, as of now, we have 28 adults through the county and some children as well. We have five local sites. We have the townhouse, Hilo, Trailer Lane, Comfort Inn, and then the Jefferson in Waireka. We have a sheltery there. Fifteen of those are RVs, so nine of those are at Trailer Lane, six are at Hilo, and then we have six hotel rooms. We do have county-funded propane, but that will only go until June 1st. That revenue stream is, as we said, California Disaster Assistance Act actually has a time limit of what we can and can't use, and as we run out of that, it'll be moved towards the, to the residents through a contract with suburban propane. So, one of the things our survivors can just call ahead, we've already set everything up, and its tanks will be already set up in kind of, I would say, a loophole, is if you get your tank filled early, then, or late, then it will be full longer. So, we can't, we set it up like that.
So, fill your tank by May 31st.
That's what I've been telling everyone, so, and then it'll run. So, that's a bit, those are the big 100-gallon tanks, so it'll, it should last for a while. With that, we do have, as we know, the 30th of November is the end of the short-term housing with, through the trailers. For us, the CDA funding runs out of that, and that is when the county is going to start cutting that out. So, that is really where we're at with, with housing for us right now. Again, we were, we weren't feeling strong on the, on the federal deck, just because of loopholes that FEMA was pushing for. So, we knew that kind of going into that appeal was gonna be a bit of a, a bit of a stretch on that. With that, I'll let Rick talk on where we're at with cleanup, and then pending any questions, we'll, we'll be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, Brian. Council, hello to you. Familiar faces here, I see. Unfortunately, you know, we survived the other big fire, so to speak, and here we are again. Just generally speaking, from my perspective, you know, these disasters are never fun, but the mill fire cleanup has gone, you know, quite well compared to, you know, what we had with the Bowles fire initially. So, pleased from that perspective. Cleanup will be completed tomorrow. We have one remaining parcel left to get erosion control, and then they will be all completed and ready for final sign-off from the county. So, one thing I want to just kind of clear up with that, with the final sign-off on these properties, you know, OES does their duty, they clean the property up, they do their own inspections, and then they refer that to the county for final sign-off. We signed off on 47 of those properties at this time, and typically, how that is dealt with is directly with the property owner. So, we provide that final sign-off for them, so they can initiate rebuilding. If there is another mechanism that we can help, if you'd like to have that up front, Tim, we could provide those directly to, to the city as well, so they can move forward with rebuilding. But, all that said, we're pretty well buttoned up, and tomorrow should be the last day for weed proper. We still have some areas in Chastain, and of course, in McKinney, but that's kind of where we're at.
Sure. One question.
Yes, sir.
Mine, it's my question.
Oh, your question.
Sorry.
Sorry, Susan.
It's me. So, I don't want to compare 2014 with this one, but in 2014, some of us had private contractors clean our lots. And then I was given a certificate from, I'm assuming it came from the state, because I know this, the county came in and did the soil, all that testing. And so, I, as a property owner, was given that certificate. And then I was curious about the people, for example, the woman that lived across the street from me that had CalRecycle come in and clean up her lot. And her certificate was sent to the city. And I'm, I'm assuming it was sent to the city and to her, I don't know that. So, as you are cleaning those up, are you not sending the certificate to the city, you're only sending it to the property owner?
Yeah, currently, yes. It's just been, it's been specifically to the property owner. If you would all choose us to send them to the city, we'd be happy to do that.
Do you, were you here?
I was.
In 2014? Do you know why?
I know your lot, Susan.
I know. It's, it's all fixed.
I was involved with your contractor.
Um, do you know why they would have done that then, sent it to the city and not, did CalRecycle would have sent it to them, to the city then and not now? That's my question.
It doesn't make sense to me, quite frankly. They also had been done through the county, because we had the final sign-off at that time also.
So, where the, where the connection?
I, I, let me interject one second, if you could. I would think that because folks are dispersed, not everybody is in weed proper, that probably would be a good, a mix. I mean, there are some people, I don't know if you have all the mailing addresses. Have you tried to mail these folks, and has anything come back? I mean, because if you get into that loop, your 30 days, if, return mail takes about 30 days to come right back to you. So, I, I think it would be important to figure out what a proper protocol would be, whether it be just to the city or to the property owner, maybe only one place? I don't know.
Yeah, so, paramount, it definitely needs to go to the property owner, and that's where our primary focus is.
Nope.
Their property, if they're aware that it's been cleaned up for their files and insurance needs it or whatnot. But, that needs to come also to the building official here at some point in time. So, either they can present it to the building official, or we could provide a copy as well to your building department.
I would prefer that you send it to the building official and myself, so we at least know, because I think I've received two, and I, we need all of them, so, yep.
So, even if it's a copy, it's okay, as long as we have the Clean Bill of Health?
Yeah.
Okay. I have another question for you on, the lots are cleaned. Are we complete with soil samples?
Yes.
They've all been returned?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Good.
Mr. Mayor, a question regarding that. So, the certificates have been issued, or have, have they been given to the property owners?
Is it 47 of them have? There's also--
The soil samples, they've, they've got, they have that in hand?
That's what the certificate is.
Okay.
Yeah. I understand there's also a piece of insurance that they're responsible for, for the debris removal portion only. So, we're having a conversation with them, you know, while we're issuing that, to make sure that that's collected also, so.
While they're issuing it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, if there's, if there's, they don't get the certificate if they haven't taken care of that, that issue?
Essentially, yes.
Oh, okay.
So, I would like to ask, I actually, hold on, I see you back there. As far as questions from the audience, should we wait till they sit down, or should we just have them side by side here?
I think they can just stand side by side, ask a question, and then--
Would you like to come forward and have a question?
It's not even a question. I, I just--
You have to come to the podium, state your name and address?
So, we can hear you.
Rachel Greeley. I'm at 484 Walnut Street now, but my affected mill fire address was 1490 Wakefield Avenue. When I was doing the cleanup, I worked like pretty closely with Baylor through CalOES, and he was amazing, and he actually directed me to Shannon Vanilla through the, what is it, the County Environmental Health. And you can go in there, and you can go physically get a copy of your certificate, they'll give it to you. Shannon Vanilla's the contact, and yeah, she'll, she'll give you any information you need, and she's even like a lot more easily contactable, like via email, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
Do you have yours, Rachel? Do you have your certificate?
I have to go look, I don't even know. All my papers are in like piles around my rental house.
So, you, you haven't got anything that you know of from the county saying that it's been released?
Well, they told me it was a sign-off, it was all good. I may have it in my email, I have to go look, like literally--
You need to have that.
Mine was one of the very first ones to be signed off, and then I called to like see how I could pay, and they didn't even have a way to set up for any of the insurance policy payments.
That was with the county?
That was with the county, I was speaking directly with the environmental health.
What was her last name, Sharon Vanilla?
It's Shannon--
Shannon.
Vanilla.
Vanilla, okay, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, and she's super helpful. She would have any kind of information that anybody would need in regards to the sign-off and any paperwork and certification.
Okay. How long, so you said you were one of the first that was signed off? How long ago was that?
January, beginning of January, something like that. It was supposed to be the end of December, but the weather pushed us out a bit, and they had me--
January?
But, I kept calling them, man, I just called and bugged them, and they put my name on the big whiteboard, and yeah.
Well, I know you, so I know who could resist her with that one. Okay, thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Rachel.
That's all, I just wanted to share the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys. Thanks.
Yeah, you're not gonna get one over on her, I can tell you.
We have one more question from councilman Sue.
Well, I'm not so sure. Craig, does, do, does the city need to see those certificates so we can start working on the streets?
No, no, the streets and stuff is in our right of way. We need to see them when we, when we get in to do the sewer repairs and that kind of stuff, we need to see--
Oh, because their sewers aren't capped yet, huh?
Correct. Nothing's been, nothing's been done over there like that.
That's right.
But, in, in the 14 fire, the city was the one that went after their insurance, and we had to get, and I'm glad we're not doing it, trust me, I'm glad we're not doing it, so.
That was why you came to my house?
Yeah.
No, Craig, thanks for kicking my memory back in. But, yeah, with the Bowles fire, it was declared by the city of weed, because it initiated the city of weed.
Right, right.
And so, that's, you all had control of those final sign-offs there, in that regard.
And we did not wait for payment. So, we had all the sign-offs, the payment was the thing that we struggled with.
For a couple of years.
Yeah. I, I think to, kind of a lack of communication on how you obtain money from your insurance companies, so. Yeah, I don't know. The agreement originally was, if your insurance covered it over and above, you collected it, or all the money went to the city for the fees. If you needed it for building, then it was waived, and if you didn't have any insurance at all, it was waived, if my memory serves me, still.
Yeah, no, that's right, because some policies didn't have cleanup in there.
Some was internal, some was external, so there was, there's lots of different clauses. I believe I talked with Shannon about that as well, so I should--
Back to my original question, the, so if somebody doesn't have their certificate for their soil sample, it's because they haven't went and picked it up? Am I, is that what I'm understanding, so it's not something that's going to just come out to everybody, you have to go get it?
Yeah, and we're actively, you know, communicating with folks to get that resolved, so we're in touch.
But, I believe he said the insurance thing has to be cleared up first, right?
That's what they just said, and that, I think that's one of the differences, potentially--
I think there's some confusion regarding that, I don't, I'm not on the other end of that, but--
Yes, you have a que--
Please.
Question, answer, statement? All of the above?
Green, 1173 Crestmore, that will be my address when it's rebuilt, so I'll still use that.
Okay.
I spoke with Shannon earlier this week, and what she told me is that, she's, I know two people she sent to that are building, but for mine, she said she have to complete it, and then she'd be done in a month, not this week, so I don't know what that difference is, there's always a difference with the information, but she said it's a lot to do, she said it'll take 30 days to get everyone, all their certificates completed, and then, yes, you can contact her and she'll send them, because she's sending mine. But, I didn't know to contact her until recently.
So, there's apparently some miscommunication here. I mean, and I think some of the folks here are a little bit frustrated as to that miscommunication, so I, I don't know what we can do to resolve that, but I, but I hear that frustration. I think this council has heard the frustration. So, for Mr. Dean and Mr. Shinone, I would like to find some way that we're going to be cooperating so that at least they know when to expect their, their stuff. I don't think there's a lot of people ready to build yet, but if that is a hindrance, we would like to move that out of the way.
Not having the information is a difference, because I've been waiting to have it since day one, and infrastructure and all different parts that people can speak on, but when you don't have the information, you can't make decisions. Yes, we got our checks starting May 4th from the settlement, but you can't do anything with it unless you have correct information. So, that was one thing that I was concerned about, but I'm glad you were here to speak to that, because I talked to her earlier, and she said it's, it's a hard job, it's only her, no one else is helping, and we know the county has a low staff presence, but she said, told me exactly, she said, I'll get yours out within this week, the rest will take about 30 days, that's what she said, so it's not gonna be tomorrow we'll finish, so I don't know what that is, so, that's what she said.
All I know is I work eight o'clock at night when I don't have things--
Survivors? Is that, that was, 30 days, and everyone else will be getting their certificates?
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days?
She said it'll take her that 30 days to complete it, so I don't know.
Okay.
She's gonna complete it one by one, but mine's coming, because I called and talked to her, I told her I want it.
So, that's it? I don't know if, if a lot of the survivors had that information.
Right, they don't. We were thinking about sharing on the collaborative effort, but I don't know how, Mike, we gotta talk about it at executive board.
Well, I, I think we should, yeah, we'll talk about that at a, at a meeting maybe, or something to that level. But, again, I mean, we're, we're having, and you guys can see this, we're having, the information's going back and forth, and we don't have consistency. What I would hope is for a little bit of that, because people out there that are the survivors, they got enough of the inconsistency, believe me. I know there's some that are living in trailers and somewhere, they're all misplaced everywhere, it's frustrating. I've done a few of these, and there's a lot of talking involved that you guys don't get to, to hear. I hear it from several levels, the council hears it from several levels, our staff hears it from many levels. Did you have anything that you, a question that you had, or a statement?
No, I, I would just like to reiterate, like, like you just said, having that good flow of communication, so we know which lots are available, where they can start building, because as of today, we've only received one set of plans, I think Mr. Thomas turned one in, and so, we're encouraging anybody and everybody, not, you know, to, to, once you get your Clean Bill of Health on your lot, and you have a set of plans, submit them to us, because that, that will take a while, through the submittal process too, as Mr. Thomas can attest, it's nothing that's gonna happen like in a couple of days. So, we, we need those plans, and, and as of right now, we're working diligently with the Underground Utility District that was declared back in, I believe, December, October, November, I think, maybe.
Is that far ago?
No.
Was it? I think it was last month.
Anyway, my months are all getting, anyway, we are having, just for the clarification for those that are sitting out there, we're having meetings with the three utility providers, Pacific Power, Vive Communications, and AT&amp;T about the Underground District. There's been some challenges because of the narrow streets and everything, but we are working with them, they are engineering the plans, they're getting ready to go out to bid. Hopefully, next month, they'll start trenching, it looks like it's probably gonna be down the middle of the street with the utilities, those particular utilities, and then, once we get that, and we'll be working simultaneously, like we said, with the, the cap in the sewer lines, and, and so, I just, you know, I know everybody's ready to, you know, start building soon, and this is a little bit different than the Bowles fire. I know, Brian, you weren't here for that, but it was, it was a little bit different. I wasn't here for that either, but this one has been, you know, unique as opposed to the Bowles fire, but I think we can, like I said, working together with your team and ours, we can get this done, you know, quickly, but that information is vital for us to have that, so we can help these folks start, you know, rebuilding as well, so, and, but I just wanted to reiterate, if, if, once you get that certificate from the county, and you get your set of plans, get them to us as soon as possible, because, you know, we have to go on a case-by-case basis to see whether or not, as we are also repairing our infrastructure, and just to let everybody know, the city has not received any money from OES yet in regards to the infrastructure rebuild. Our engineers are working with them and getting them adequate information, so we can get the rebuild process started soon. I mean, our, our initial blush was about four and a half million to repair, what needed to be repaired out there, so, but we've met with the folks with CalOES, and we're following up with them and trying to ensure that this is gonna be expedited quickly, and now that it's been not declared a FEMA disaster, I know for some of you out there that wanted to rebuild, that doesn't mean a whole lot, but for the city, it means a bunch, because having to jump through federal hoops versus working directly with the state is much, much better. We prefer to work with the state, so that'll be helpful for us as well, so, but we are, those discussions have been going on for, for quite some time, as well as the Underground Utility District as well, and, but we just ask for your patience, but we are actively behind the scenes, working to, to get this thing done, and to get you guys in the rebuild process as quickly as possible, because we want to see that, see that done soon, just like these gentlemen.
So, I, I do have a question, sir.
Sure.
So, on the, working with the state, so one of the things that we pushed early, and it was denied, and then we, we pushed an appeal, was basically to get rid of the match for the county, for both CDA on McKinney and Mill, and I just want to make sure that you guys are taking advantage of that.
No, they, they told us that we are--
There should be no match.
They're, they've told us it's gonna be a 75-25.
Oh, well, I'll make that call again.
Well, if you do, we'd love that--
That'd make a big difference for us.
Be a huge difference.
That one of the things that they impacted of the communities, not only here, but Slater Fire, Lava Fire, Annalow Fire, Tanna Fire, we can name them all, that has been a huge significant hit to the county and to all of us as--
Sure.
--residents of Siskiyou County, and one of my requests was to the governor was to eliminate that match, so I will, we can talk about that offline, but I can push that again, because that's certainly something that can help all of our communities as well.
Well, because if you're looking at a $4 million to repair the infrastructure--
Significant chunk.
That's a million dollars out of our pocket that just comes out, that we don't get back, so--
We can push that again.
Okay, we'd appreciate that, Brian.
Absolutely. And then, my other question is, what is your, as the city planner, what is the timeline for rebuild? Like, when we, when can we see our survivors starting to break ground?
I think we'll start seeing, the survivors, we, depending on where the lot placement is, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, is, some of them can start rebuilding soon. I mean, but the, the issues that come into play, Brian, is whether or not they're, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're doing major work on the water and sewer through those areas, because some of these lots had actual sewer mains running underneath them, so, Craig, you wanted to reiterate?
Yeah, it, it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, Robert Thomas, that's, that's put his plans in, we can start building there as soon as we've already been through plan check and stuff, he, he can go. It's gonna be, power's gonna be coming, it's not gonna be available, readily available, but we'll start putting power in where we can get to the houses that are building first, so. I think we'll be digging, like, like Tim said, we should be ready to go, we should be with power and everything, I think two months, three months tops will be done, what the plans are, so.
Excellent, that's great to hear. So, and that's, for me, as a, as a concern, as the emergency manager for the county, that is a significant push, being that we now have survivors that are, that are needing to rebuild, right? And as, as that program starts to end, and the housing community, or the housing part of it ends, what does that look like for our survivors? And I know working with the Resource Center has been extremely helpful in, in being part of that, but I think that discussion needs to start opening up as well, citywide and countywide, what does that look like, and how does that, how does that impact our survivors? And additionally, not to, you know, I'm an emergency manager, so there's doom and gloom, but we're also moving back into another fire season, which is concerning as well, and with our beautiful weather and our rainy weather, it's just gonna push it back a little bit farther, so that's gonna be another concern, that the county will be pulled away from that as well.
Yeah. I, I, I expect, you know, that hopefully, that it's not gonna affect us a great deal with the fire season stuff, but I, I will say, the big difference between us, this fire and the Bowles fire, is according to the ones that were here in 2014, that we had a really mild winter, so the cleanup was much quicker, and, which, you know, makes a big difference in the timeframe as well. As you all know, I mean, we had, and I think I understand some of the frustration from some of the homeowners out there, because they, they drive by, and they'll see, you know, the guys, the crews out there working to do cleanup, and then they're gone, and then they're back, and then they're gone. What's because of the weather situation primarily, because of going back to the McKinney Fire to do cleanup there, then coming back here, because of the weather and, and the snow, snow loads on these lots, so, but to answer your question, we are going to work as quickly and expedite this as quickly as possible, because we, as the city, want these, you know, these folks back into their homes as soon as possible, and we don't want to be a barrier, as well as the county, in getting that done. So, we're really pushing, the message right now is, you know, if you get your plans, bring them to City Hall, get them with John, and that'll get the ball started, and, like I say, as of today, we've only received one set of plans, but once those come in, I've talked to one of the attorneys from the, the, Russ Reiner, his, his law firm, he's working with a developer out of Reading, and I believe he's gonna be holding some meetings with some of these folks, and, and, you know, showing them different options as far as sets of plans, which I think would help expedite it even faster, so, but, yeah, I mean, we're, we're gonna be, you know, working our tails off to, to get this thing rebuilt.
Great, we appreciate that, and like I said, I know Rick and I, oh, I don't know, you're not going anywhere, I'm not going anywhere, so, the plan is that if there's anything that you need from us, please do not hesitate, if there needs to be a working group to address this situation of the, the sheltering program, please, let's, let's sit down and, and figure that out, and I think as a group and a collaborative mind, we can really sit down and hammer that out, and make sure that we're really getting the best for the community and, and the survivors.
I, I would like to interject one last time. One, I think what we've all said here is that communication is a huge key here, okay? I don't care if it's between OES and the city, or the city and OES between the survivors. OES needs to communicate to the city, the city needs to communicate to the survivors out there. I, I think we're in a little bit better spot today about what we can commit to and maybe what we can't commit to. I'd say the big role is for the survivors themselves, they have a major chore, and that is to pick and go get a housing plan, and have those housing plans engineered, because even if those lots are cleared, and they got a Clean Bill of Health, if you don't have a set of building plans yet, you're possibly looking at another two months before those things are approved. It takes the housing plans, it takes them engineered, they have to go to plan checkers, back to housing, back to engineers, it is not as simple as everybody, at least as simple as I thought, to tell you the truth, but we will be having a construction coordinator coming on board, which will be able to hopefully assist, that's from the Resource Center, I'm speaking out there, some of the survivors as far as maybe lending a hand, as far as making some of those choices. I've never built a house, I wouldn't have that expertise at all, so.
Mr. Mayor, I got one thing.
Yes.
One more thing before you.
Just, I was, Tuesday, I was on a conference call and I had, what, two or three, four people on, in, in the audience that were at that meeting. And I, we, we asked when the certificates would be ready for, as far as regarding the soil samples. And we were told it was going to be the end of this week or the first of next week. And the information that we got tonight is totally different than what, I mean, that's, that's what we were told on Tuesday. So, as we go forward here, we talk about communication, we really got to be diligent about patching up these holes or this, this miscommunication that's happening. And because we were really, I mean, the people I've talked to in the meetings I've been in, it's been, you know, we're waiting for these soil samples. And what, they've been ready since January? I mean, that's, that's a serious gap in communication, so.
And I don't think, I think that's a part of another, part, piece of miscommunication because there's been several statements here as to when that timeline is occurring. I am saying we need consistency. If it's next week, if it's next month, at least they, everybody needs to know, and I know there could be a, a timeframe where some get done quicker than others just because of how the things get processed. But tell, be honest and tell people, if it's going to be two weeks, it's easier to hear two weeks than to not know anything. I mean, from my standpoint, if I know it's two weeks down the road, I can do something else besides wait every day and make a phone call.
I have another question.
You have a question?
Craig, does Public Works have everything they need to get Public Works part going? Or do you need to see those certificates to go in and cap off the sewers and start stuff?
We'll need, we'll need certificates for the sewers, but we need OES funding to even get that process started. And we're just now in the process of dealing with, with state OES on getting those funds coming. We don't have a go-ahead to start spending our own funds and get reimbursed or anything, so it's, we're, we're playing a waiting game. And, and the sewers was a critical thing that, that never has been addressed.
And, but you don't need those certificates to start moving on that? You just need money, like we all do?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
And let's put it this way, folks. Let's put it, the total budget for the city of weed is $3.6 million as of today's budget hearing.
Not final.
Not final, but the infrastructure alone is 4. something million dollars. So, the reason we're not rushing out a little bit to get that started is-
We want to keep the fire department open?
We want to keep the fire department open, we want the police department, we want, we want the streets swept or, or your garbage picked up. All of those items are part of what makes everything work here. So, hopefully, is OES listening tonight? Can we send them a message?
We can.
Not Siskiyou OES, I'm talking Cal OES.
No, we'll, we'll definitely relay that. And, and, you know, a lot of it is, it is the contractors and working with those crews out, out there and, and we're communicating, they're, they're in our EOC, so our, our Emergency Operations Center is our Recovery Operations Center. So, we can literally walk down, grab some candy and find out where we're at for the day. And, and it's, it is an everyday occurrence that, hey, we, we need to get this going, like, we need to finish this up. And, and if it was up to us, we would have been done weeks ago and months ago. But the state is the state and the contractors are even the contractors.
The only thing I have is consistency for the folks, that's all that I'm, I'm really harping on. I would like to know, we're going to be able to do temporary power poles out there for, when do people can construct?
No. That, that's not currently in the plan for temporary power because the power poles are missing. So, it's going to have to come with the underground.
Okay.
How's that going?
We're, we're moving on it.
Okay. Is there a projected finish date on, on the underground or at least parts where we can start construction?
Well, they, they've, Pacific Power is the lead on the, the job because they have the funding to, to, to do the initial. We had a little bit of pushback from a couple of the other utilities, but they've kind of settled down because I think they thought it was going to cost this astronomical amount of money. And so, Pacific Power is the lead. I talked to Todd Andrews, he's our rep for this area with Pacific Power. He's assured, I talked to him about a week ago, he said they're about a week to 10 days from getting final engineering plans. He said they'll go out to bid, they're going to do a, a, a quick two-week bid for the trenching and all the work that needs to be done. So, he thinks that is a, you know, a strong possibility that probably like, I would say, probably like mid-June, they, they will start the trenching and, and laying the lines out there. So, and then there's other work to do because they have to establish where the, the, the boxes are going to be throughout the, the neighborhood. And so, that's going to take a little bit of time to get that done because they have to get permission from the-
Owners.
Owners to be able to do that. So, you know, that's the, the, that's the sacrifice you have to make when you go underground, you have to give up a little bit of your yard to, to be able, some, not everybody, but some will have to give part of the yard up in order to have those underground utilities. But the benefit far outweighs because you're not going to have, you know, live wires swinging over the top of your house with 80 mile an hour winds anymore. So, I, it, it's a great, great thing to have, very, makes it much more safer. And that's one of the reasons why Pacific Power jumped i- i- into this and said, we want to do this, is because it's, it's a fire mitigation for them and it's a safety thing for them as well, so.
I had a question back there. Rachel, did you want to speak? Does anybody else want to speak there? If you, just let me know. Okay.
Now, you have to come to my-
No. Rachel, we're 90 Wakefield Avenue. I was just wondering if the homeowners were going to have to help pay for the roof repairs at all?
No.
Okay.
Nope, that's, that, that's, that's, once the city has declared it an underground district, which we did a few months ago, they're required to, to do that. That's why we had the public hearings and the utility companies had an opportunity to come in and speak. They didn't, they didn't object, neither did any of the homeowners. So, no, you're not going to be required to pay extra for that, so.
Ah, we have another fellow out there. I knew somebody had a question.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jermaine Smith. My affected property is at 1112 Crestmore. So, I, I was just hoping to come here to get specifics because I hear a lot of, it's going and it's two weeks and I'm in planning and development. I do that for a living and we don't do our work like that. And so, we need to understand, what is the schedule? Where is the funding? What, you, you're speaking of Pacific Power starting next month. And so, what funding are they using? And how far is that going to extend them into the work that they're completing? Are we going to have open trenches while we wait on OES to figure out when they're going to extend us funding or extend the city funding? And then what is going on with your claim with Roseburg? That's a, that's additional funding. So, who is the point person? How is this all being structured? So, we understand what's going on and we have a visible schedule where we can track your progress. Because it's going, it's not getting us there. Because next month, we're going to be right here and he's going to be saying it's going again. And we don't need that. We need, we need some factuals, we need actual schedules, we need actual timelines, and we need actual accountability. This is frustrating, right? You have a lot of people that are emotional and they need to know answers so we can schedule things to get built. I spent my day meeting with contractors, doing surveys on our land, and I come here and I feel like I'm more organized than you are. And that's just unacceptable. And then, the elephant in the room is, nobody wants to talk about Roseburg's accountability, right? So, they're the ones who caused this whole mess. And nobody's found any inspection records of their safety protocols. Cal Fire hasn't, why are they here? Who's responsible for that? Right? So, if something happens 10 years from now and we in this, we're in the same situation with them practicing just ridiculous safety protocols, they're not being accountable, nobody's, there's no oversight, where is that at in the future planning for you all to convey to us or at least give us some resources as to who is, who's controlling this? Is it Cal Fire? Is it the county? Everybody seems to turn a blind eye when it's a billion-dollar company, multi-billion-dollar company, that's doing business in your town and everybody wants to say that it's out of our city limits. That's BS. This affects your residents. Okay? Right, I know that. I understand that. But there's still some accountability that needs to be had with the city because it's affecting your residents, as you guys can see. So-
I agree with what you're saying 100%.
Okay.
And I can tell you, as a councilperson, but as a citizen, I didn't lose a home, so I can't feel your pain, but I know most everybody sitting in this audience, and I suggested that you come to these meetings and ask questions. You know, I, I'd be honest with you, some of the things that were said tonight, I'm like, January? So, I'm in the same boat at certain things. So, we have to pick it up, start over and, and at least pick out where we're at so we can go forward. And, and I, you know, I want to say I understand, but I didn't lose anything in there.
Right.
But this is still my city and I love it. And I'll do anything that I can to help it. So, I, I know this will sound cliche, but, you know, have a little more patience so we can get all the information that we are not getting to. And, and nothing on anybody, just that we need to communicate. Both sides need to communicate so we can get on the same page and get this thing rolling. I can't wait to see the new homes and people smiling and having a, a, a normal life. So, don't think that we're not seeing it because we are. And I talk to folks every day. I get more information out there, Brays Food Place than anywhere. And I don't mean that as a joke, I mean that as-
I hear you.
-wholeheartedly. So, just let us work on these things that, there may be some things that can't be discussed at this particular time. And, and in time, things will come out or, or they won't come out. I'm just-
Understood.
And I don't know anything about the fire part of it, that's being withheld from all of us.
Yeah.
So, we don't have that information as far as I understand.
But I, I just don't want that, that conversation and that pursuit to rest, right?
Absolutely.
And I, and I, and I appreciate, and I know you guys are passionate, but, and, and I think everybody here that has been affected has the level of patience, right?
Absolutely.
And we understand that things take time.
Absolutely.
I, I live in the Bay Area and we're, we're six, seven months trying to pull a permit. So, I, I get it, right?
Nine months since it started, I understand.
Well, well, I get that too. I'm, I'm in, I'm with a private organization and I get that. But, you know, when we, when we have OES here with you all and we still don't have any definitive answers as to where the funding is, that's a problem. And, you know, they, they need a point person and, and-
I'm county, I'm not state.
Okay, okay, okay. And I'm sorry, I got here a little late, so I don't know who's county, but, but-
We're not, and believe us, we're pushing on the state every single day.
Sure.
So, we need to push a little harder.
We do, we do. Are you all?
Yeah, no, I'm not saying you're not, I'm saying, but we need to push.
Yeah.
And we can't let this get behind us, we have to keep in front of it.
Right.
So, I'm with you on that.
And so, I just want to get back to what I, what we can understand. So, if Pacific Power is supposed to start next month and they have funding allocated for their scope of work, what timeframe? You said of three months. So, we still have sewer caps and sewer repair that needs to happen. That's going to require more open trenching. So, are we going to start the process, are you, excuse me, are you all going to start the process in coordination with Pacific Power and allow them to open trenches when we still may need to open those back up? I mean, where's the coordination? Is, is everybody understanding how that scope of work needs to be coordinated? Because if you, you're not going to have homeowners coming in and their contractors being able to perform work with open trenches. It's dangerous, it's, it's too much congestion, as you all mentioned, a lot of the streets are narrow as it is, right? So, I, we, we need, you all need to put together a plan of coordination of how these construction activities are going to happen. Because they're not going to, they can't compound on one another. We can't have Pacific Power in there, then Vive, then AT&amp;T, they open up a trench, then you guys come with DPW and you need to cap sewer lines, we need to get authorization from the owners to allocate a certain, you know, area of their yard or their property to put, you know, any type of junction box for all this undergrounding. There needs to be some type of centralized joint trench. We need to understand what's going on. Where is the plan? Where's the city, where's it, where's any engineer that you guys can hire or have on staff that can put this plan together so that we're not continually coming here, month after month, with maybe's, it might happen, it's going to happen, we're working on it? We need to have a schedule. We should have that up on this, on the, on the TV screen. We should be reviewing the schedule and understanding how this is all coordinated. And we should see a timeline of scope activities, contractors, and get an understanding of how this all happens. That is the way construction is done. And we're, we're not there. And I, I, I just need to hear from you all, how do we get there? How do we coordinate? That is essential here. It is. If you don't have a schedule, we're just spinning our wheels coming to these meetings. We're spinning our wheels with you guys on Zoom meetings every other Tuesday. These guys aren't hearing anything different, there's no progress that's been achieved. So, we need to pause right now, we need to develop a plan and understand how these things get coordinated, how each phase of the scope of work that needs to happen is going to be laid out, and then there's, needs to be a schedule on that TV, and then we can make some progress. Meanwhile, your, 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 your claim with Roseburg, who's pushing that? Like, that's money ready to be put, put in your pocket. We, we shouldn't have to, you all shouldn't have to depend on EO, on, on any state funding, you should be pushing Roseburg to pay you. They paid everybody here, why haven't they paid you guys yet? They're just as culpable to you all as they have been to all the victims, all, all the victims of this fire. You guys are essentially victims as well, right? So, where is that push?
Mr. Attorney, what can we divulge at this point? I mean, other than the fact that we have-
We have litigation ongoing.
We have mediation ongoing.
Mediation, is it mediation?
Yeah.
I guess, yeah.
We're in discussions with Roseburg.
Okay, so can you divulge a timeline where you guys want to achieve any type of settlement? Is there a timeline in, in, in sight at all?
No, these things don't operate on a timeline. I think they're direct.
Can I, can I, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, I have lost everything. I have been exactly where those people are right now, so I can say that. And, and again, and I don't know if you were here when I mentioned this, but we couldn't do anything with our property until we had a certificate that we could bring down here to the city that had our plans with us. Honestly, tonight is the first, first time I have heard, and believe me, having been where they are, literally sitting there after an event like that, I have been saying for three months, two months, where, if it's all cleaned up, where are the certificates? Just tonight, I found out that they're all done. Well, that was news to me and, and I've, and I've been there. So, I'm not, to come in here and blame us because we don't know is, is a little bit pushing it because we have been trying. Because yes, we do want those people back in their houses.
Right.
And, and I'm, I want you guys all to know, the feeling that I get when I see a pumper concrete, concrete truck is just beyond, I love pumper concrete trucks because somebody's building a house. So, you guys will know it.
So, I'm not blaming anybody, but there needs, there's work that needs to be done. And, and I hear you talking about certificates and home building pumper trucks, that's all great, but we're not even there yet. We're not even there yet.
And we understand that. We do understand the fact, but we are not the Bay Area because we just can't go and start projects. We have to, we have to deal with PP, PP&amp;L up here to do the trenching and the underground. We've got pushback, so then we have to go to discuss pushback, why AT&amp;T doesn't want to build underground, why they want to go above, they can't go above, but they keep insisting, well, maybe we can. I'm going, okay. As our city manager gets frustrated, we don't have the ability to go do some of our own trenching because we really do not have the funds. Until those funds are released, a schedule won't do you squat. I just got to put it there. You can't make a schedule without any money.
I, I get that.
Okay.
So, so, but you're, you're, you, you can't make a schedule without any money, but, but So, so, but you're, you're, you, you can't make a schedule without any money, but, but we're being told that work is going to start next month. So
Work's going to start. Let me, let me back up. You and I had a conversation for almost an hour a couple weeks ago. And as I stated, the jobs that are going to be done by the Underground District is 100% funded by the three entities, Pacific Power, AT&amp;T, and, and Vive Communications. That project is going to get started soon. As far as the other stuff with the, the caps, we're, and by the way, behind the scenes, we're, we're in the middle, we're almost finished, right Craig? With the surveying of, of, of the entire thing, which is actually going to help save time and money as well. So that, that is there. We are, we have it, we don't, we're not big enough to have a full-time engineer. He's out of Redding, so we have to sometimes work around his schedule as well. But we are working with him. We just met with a team of OES just last week and trying to hone down what is eligible for us to be compensated for. And I'm glad to hear that it's going to be 100% because like, like was stated, we just don't have millions and millions sitting around to, to do this. But we are, we may not have a Gantt chart sitting up there and showing everybody what, what's going, being done, but we are working our tails off and trying to get this thing done. We are not dragging our feet, you know, in, in any capacity. We want this thing done. I mean, there is no reason why the city of Weed doesn't want to rebuild Lincoln Heights. We want Lincoln Heights rebuilt. We want it done right. We want it done, you know, right the first time. You know, the old saying of, you know, measure twice, cut once. That's what we want to do as well. And I understand the frustration. I've never had, as Councilmember Tavallaro said, I've never had my house burned down. I, I, I can't imagine the frustration. But I, I assure you, there is nobody here dragging their feet based on the fact that, well, we'll just get to when we get to it. It is a priority.
Sure. And I don't think that's lost here, right? I think that it just, there's, there needs to be some levels of efficiency, right? And I, and you sound like you're, you're, you have some engineering background. Undergrounding typically involves a joint trench. You have a, a number of municipalities within that joint trench. So to start work and not have all of the municipalities understanding how those utilities are going to go into that joint trench before you start opening ground automatically raises a red flag with me in terms of efficiency. And I think you guys should understand and look into that before you just say they're going to start next month.
But there's also other issues. I don't, I can speak for Craig, but there are issues with, those aren't your typical lines. Those homes were built by a lumber company for their workers.
I understand all the history. I do.
I know. But all of those water lines run underneath homes.
That was only on Wakefield from my understanding.
I, I don't know the full detail, but I'm, but there's just more than, for me, there's more than just a small issue with some of it. I'm not, I'm not saying I, I would love to see a timeline.
Place, like still, again, that's Wakefield. That's not, that's probably 10% of what we have in the damaged area. It's not the entire area. So again, now I feel like I'm getting excuses and, and not a plan moving forward. You know, there, there is a very distinct pathway here that needs to be formulated and you all need to sit down and form it. And then you can have a Gantt chart and understand when stuff is going to happen or at least how long it's going to take before you have funding. You just push out the start date as to when you're going to have funding. But you can formulate as to how long these operations take and how to coordinate all of the scope of work that needs to occur during this time. That can be formulated. And then, once you do get all the funding situated, then you move the schedule and say it's going to start July 1st. And then all the other logic in that schedule is, is already put together. The plan of action stays the same. You convey this to all of us and everybody follows that schedule as the months tick away.
So the way I understand it from the information presented tonight is that the, the joint utility companies in coordination with the city are starting work next month at the latest. From talking, you know, with our Public Works Director, the city cannot move on the sewer and water issues until the homeowners or property owners give us the permits that they can go on those properties and start the work. So based on that information, and I've done multi-millionaire projects stateside and abroad for a living, based on that information, step one, is the property owners need to obtain those permits from Siskiyou County so that we can begin that work. Our city can't give a schedule on when work's going to begin until they get the approval to go in there and they can map out when they're going to start. Now, the utilities are going in, so that's, that's a known factor and the utility companies are paying for those utilities. And as far as California paying the OES funds, that's well outside the scope of the city or even the county at this point. I've sat in many council meetings of, and planning commission meetings over the last six, seven years I've been involved with the city and seen a lot of empty seats out here. I'm very thankful that everyone's coming here tonight to ask questions, air their grievances, try and get things coordinated. I would ask that you do the same with Siskiyou County and with the state of California. I would like to see as much energy going to Sacramento to get that money set loose so that we can do the work we need to do. And with the county, as far as permits and things like that, if I own a property and I need a permit, I'm going to be on the phone with the county every day till I get what I need. And then I'm going to be here the very next day to give it to the city so they can do what they need to do. So that in my mind is step one. Yeah, as far as scheduling after that, I'll leave that to the city manager and the Public Works Director because that's their profession, that's what they do. But they can't schedule if they don't have permission to go on those properties and do the work. And so I agree with you. I live my life by, you know, MS Project and Gantt charts. But they can't schedule a project until they know which properties they can go on to to begin with to lay out a map of where they're going to be. So I would highly encourage everyone, and those of you that are maybe watching from home and not here tonight, please contact the county and get those certificates. That's step one. Step two, whether you have the certificates or not, if they tell you it's going to be a few weeks, get your plans to the city. Because when I checked this morning, we had one set of plans. And that's going, something else the city's going to need to coordinate with the Pacific Power, AT&amp;T, Vive, and with Public Works. Those people have their plans and, and to the city are going to be the first ones to get priority for the construction. And so I think it's critical that those plans get in ASAP because that takes time to get engineered and get done. So please carry that energy forward from tonight with those other organizations, getting those certificates in possession and getting those plans submitted.
Sure. I'm in touch with several families and I can, I can help lead that charge. One last question before I step away. As far as Pacific Power and Vive and AT&amp;T are concerned, it sounds like AT&amp;T's on the fence about undergrounding their lines. I don't know why I underground their lines all the time and
Not anymore.
But, okay, I guess that's a new change, but
No, it's not a change.
Okay.
They, they, they wanted to go aerial and they, at the end of the last call, they said, well, we'll get back with you and let you know whether we're going to go aerial or underground. I said, no, you're not. I said, you don't have a choice.
You gotta, you gotta put up power, you're going to put up poles in every, all the neighborhood to
That's exactly what I said.
Line that's stupid.
It is stupid. That's why I told them.
Anyway, so my question is, are they going to be also addressing, they're addressing the mains, are they addressing all the laterals too? Because I understand that, you know, they, you guys need certificates and that may, from the sound of it, take a while, but at least we can get a, you know, some type of, of, you know, clarification from the owners that intend on rebuilding and making sure that they issue an authorization for those laterals to occur to, again, not hold up the process that they're going to be out there next month.
Okay, the, the sewer mains are fine. Besides the debris that's, that's entered them from the fire and from the, the weather and the rain. So whether they're rebuilding or not, they need to be capped on their properties. So the city's going to have to hire a contractor to go in and cap and put in a cleanup box and everything like we did in Angel Valley. And get that set up. We're going to have to enter every property to do that. We'll need to have something from the property owners allowing us to get on the property. The property owners own the lateral. All the city owns is a main, so, but we will get the boxes put in. The utilities are in one trench. There's engineers working on it. Pacific Power has hired an outside engineer to put this together because they don't have enough staff and time to get it put together. So that's moving forward as quickly as possible. And the rest of the stuff, we're working with OES. We're trying to get a schedule. I'd love to put down a schedule. We've never told nobody not to bring a permit. We can get per, plans approved. We can, you know, we can get ready. We can be there ready to go. We're not holding anybody up in my opinion.
Sure. I just, you know, I, I understand that, you know, and my, my, uh, my concern is that with the amount of infrastructure work that needs to occur, I, I think it's going to hamper plans to be, to, to, to build the house. Yeah, the, the, the permitting process can be extensive and that needs to happen as soon as possible for who's ever going to rebuild. But I think that there's going to be a halt when those, those homes are permitted and we're going to be waiting for that infrastructure to clear and so they can get in and do the work. It's just, it, it can't compound like that. I just don't think it's going to be possible in those, in that neighborhood. So I know you guys are pushing that and I think that the homeowners are going to be accountable. There are several people that are getting bids. You'll, you'll have an onslaught of plans being come in, being submitted and those things are going to wait in a queue. I already know that, I already know the process.
I know, but let me interject here. We have a whole meeting to go through. So I, I think, I think we've let you have your three minutes. Okay. Are there any other comments from the public?
Yeah, I have one more thing I, I want to say. Mr. Smith, I want to thank you for coming and, and, and the entire audience. This is how we're going to get better. We're holding each other, you know, as a council right now. I know right now we're going to be a little more sensitive when we get that information that, well, we really don't know, nobody knows. We're going to be a little more diligent now. Everybody, OES is going to be a little more diligent now, I hope, you know, as far as communication. I mean, what I told you about happened on Tuesday, it happened on Tuesday. That was the information we got. It still wasn't ready. You know, where these certificates we're talking about. So then those, those are crucial things, but these meetings are wonderful. This is what we need to do. This is how things get done.
I agree.
Thank you.
We need to continue patience from getting a little bit of progress in people's lives. Nobody's expecting a whole thing to happen. So a little bit of progress at a time, I think everybody will be
We'll get better.
Do we have Shannon Vanilla's phone number available to, if the public calls? Okay, we have, Rachel has it, okay. I think the city should have it in case they get ahold of us, we can refer to her. Or maybe you guys got it.
Yeah, we have it in all, make it available to you. Shannon is definitely the, the point person with the county for environmental health.
Okay.
It's actually spelled Vanilla.
Okay.
Her email is at
Thank you, Rachel. We'll find her. Okay. Thank you. Yes, Steve.
Brian with the Family Community Resource Center. I just want to reiterate that we have staff in place here in the city to advocate for survivors and to help those that don't have the wherewithal to make phone calls every day. We also have a spiritual wellness committee that can help with counseling and connecting people to other resources. So please reach out if you need help making phone calls, if you need help connecting with the city, the county, the state, or any other organization. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. Any other discussion? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Onto presentation B, I guess it is. Carrie from Caltrans, if she didn't fall asleep back there?
I doubt she fell asleep.
Have the handouts? Okay. I have them if you want them. I'm going to, I'll just Otherwise I'll have to recycle them.
No, but the people back there might want some.
What is it on the Caltrans project?
Yeah.
It's part of my presentation. It's kind of, it's a lot of information and I'm not going to go over all of it. I'm going to do more of the 10,000-foot view of what's going to happen the next three years on I-5 between Dunsmere and the city of Mount Shasta. And of course, anything that happens there impacts Weed and of course it'll impact anyone traveling on I-5 or going to work down in the area. So this has been a long time coming, this project. It's called the SAC Gap Combined. It is a rehabilitation of the pavement for the northbound lanes of I-5. A few years ago, I guess it was three to four now. We did the southbound. Now we're finishing up and doing the northbound. With that, we're also replacing the bridge deck, just the top deck part of the southbound Dunsmere, Dunsmere Bridge. It's the one with the arch that goes over the river and the Talendale Park and such. So we combined those two together. We learned a lot from the first project that we were trying to nip in the bud on this one. And some of those things were, were really striving to get two lanes in the northbound direction as much as possible to help alleviate traffic with the trucks so that they have their own lane to climb. We are minimizing ramp closures as much as possible. We're keeping Lake Boulevard open for business access. Lake Street, sorry. Lake Street.
It is massive.
And then to, to do some of this, we actually hired the contractor early. We hired him about two, three years ago and he's been, the, the whole team has been with us for, through design, talking about staging, looking for efficiencies, making this as fast as possible. And so we're in and out of here as quick as possible. That being said, it's a $160 million project. It's many, many miles of rehab and it will take three years. So just quickly going through the presentation, the first year, 2023, it will start. Well, we're waiting for one piece of federal paper and then signing the contract. So the contractor's raring to go, we're looking at construction staking. You'll probably see him out there in June. So 2023, they're starting on some work on the, the bridge in Dunsmere and the major concrete is going to be from Mott Avenue to the Pioneer overhead. The Pioneer overhead is the first UPRR bridge. So that's going to be the most of it down there. It's going to be, we're working from the south going to the north. In the packet is bringing it up. We have some staging plans in here and these are the engineering plans because I threw them together quickly, but since then I've been able to have our graphic artist put together what's on here, but put cars on it so you can see what's going on. It'll be a little different where we're going to split the northbound traffic for some of the stages where the locals will have to, want to get off in Mount Shasta. Will have to take the right-hand lane that stays in the northbound lanes. Through traffic, we'll take the left-hand, which will actually cross over into the southbound lane. So looking at your southbound, you'll have one or two, depending on the stage, southbound lanes plus a northbound lane passing each other with K-Rail in between, barrier in between. And then on the other side of the work will be another northbound lane for people to access the town and get off.
Are you going to have arrows and graphs?
Arrows and graphs. Yes, well, we'll have lots of flashing signs out there. And, you know, it might be a little work in progress to make sure it's all clear to travelers as this is kind of new for District Two to do this. Okay, so that's 2023. 2024, we'll be starting up again in Pioneer and going up to Abrams Lake. And, oh, and just everything's clear in the winter time. We're working like April through October, November, getting out of the way for any kind of snow. 2024, oh, also in here is the ramp closures. And so for more detail, please see the packet that was submitted. So there is a long-term closure for the Dunsmere Avenue on-ramp. If that's one that you take leaving Dunsmere, you'll have to make your way around up to Siskiyou Avenue. And then 2025 is Abrams to Blackview overhead. And then that's the, the northern limit of our project in 2025. And then we'll have 25-day closures on Abrams. And then the on-ramp from northbound Shasta Boulevard will be a long term as it says up there. We will have a webpage. If you go to the District Two website, dot ca.gov, go find District Two and then there'll be projects. And we'll have a webpage there with more information, contacts, things like that. And that's the last page is the contacts. I'm Carrie Maltz, project manager. With me tonight is Nikki Mallory. She's going to be the resident engineer. Her number is provided as well. And then from the contractor side, Walsh Myers, is Tony, who was not able to make it tonight, but that's my presentation. There'll be a lot of pumper trucks.
Are, are you done? Are you done? Any questions from the council? Concrete pumper truck.
Appreciate you guys letting us know ahead of time about this. This is going to be great for people that need to take that transportation route. So appreciate you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Up last on the presentation list, Raymond Strack. Oh, audience, any questions? Hold on, don't go way too far. Sure.
Just wondering, what are the safety precautions at nighttime? Because signs are hard to see in lights. So what's being, from a safety perspective, instituted for the road changes?
Any more questions? All right, I think you're free to go. On, up-deck or on-deck and now up-to-bat, Ray Strack?
Did someone?
It's a note. Those are discount coupons to Caltrans.
No, this looks like sort of important to do this. This might have been Brian's. Yeah, I'm gonna, this looks like it might, he won't want that.
Okay. Is it blackmail material?
Excuse me?
Is it blackmail material? I'm just kidding you.
Man, honestly?
I'm just kidding.
Can I leave that? Howdy, everybody. Thanks for having me. This presentation is not nearly as well-done or as, quite frankly, impactful to the community as the prior two, but I was asked to come up and just let y'all know how things are going.
Name and address?
My name is Raymond Strack.
I've been dying to ask.
4605 Hilltop Lane. Lovely new spot. Moved out of Hammond and up to Carrick. I like it a lot. And they're doing all the new power lines in Carrick, so that's looking good. The biggest thing that I'm going to open with and just let y'all know is that there might be some topics of discussion that you guys wanted to cover tonight that I'm not going to be able to because we are in due diligence negotiations and I am under NDA with our investor group. So there might be some questions that I just can't answer. I should be able to answer them in about 30 days. So we'll see how that goes. But yeah, I'm no longer in charge, is I guess also a big sort of component of that, right? It's like we've brought on a development group and we've sold off a chunk of the company. So things that two years ago or three years ago were unilateral decisions or decisions that were made internally with our company are now decisions that have to be made in conjunction with those investor and development groups. So, you know, industry outlook in California has. So yeah, I mean, long and the short of it, it's probably no surprising news to anyone that follows what's going on, but California cannabis market has been an absolute mess. The state did us all a tremendous disservice between the changing of the goalposts and taxation structure and all sorts of different things that I won't really go into. The inability to access banking capital continues to be a huge hurdle, especially for a project that's, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. And there's just really not much to be done about that from, from our perspective in terms of, you know, there are some federal lobbying efforts. And even this morning, the SAFE Act, this Cannabis Banking Act was reintroduced to the Senate Banking Committee. I watched those after our, after our Carne Valley meeting with the chamber this morning. I went back home and watched those meetings and, you know, it's, it's federal politics at its finest. That is what it is. One of the more interesting components in this that I think some of you are aware of, but I think that everyone is going to be pleased about is that there's going to be a significantly more robust tourism component to this project. So TOT tax heads in beds, getting people to the community so that they spend money in our community as opposed to just being an export project that we sort of initially envisioned. And that came about through some contacts that we have in the development world, folks that do things like, like vineyard tourism, right, viticulture tourism. So you're going to visit a fancy vineyard, there's a restaurant, there's a spa, there's lodging, et cetera. And our investor group has really, really hammered that they want us to focus on the genetics development component of the project. So at some point in the near term, there'll be the next round of, of design plans of middles. We'll have significantly less, what we call biomass production, so significantly less growing in the classic sense of the word, and a much, much higher, again, tourism component as well as the genetics development component, which arguably is most interesting in, in this paradigm because it's the genetics development component that most heavily utilizes the value proposition of the geographic indicator appellation of origin that I served on the State Committee for and secured the rights to use under the revenue sharing proposal in the development agreement, right? So that means that licensing agreements with cultivators in other states like New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, and Florida can utilize our genetics. It's the only component of the supply chain that's exportable because under federal regulations, it falls under the farm bill because seeds and tissue culture cuttings contain less than 0.3% tetrahydrocannabinol. So there's already a burgeoning market and one of my friends is actually leading the charge specifically in Massachusetts where they're bringing in California legacy genetics that are in extraordinarily high demand. And I'll give you guys a great anecdote. So y'all know that before I started moving around with my father's job, I grew up in New York City. So I have a second cousin who's got a family member who owns a building in what we'd call a green zone, right? You could get a permit there. And I had my, I had Wally, I said, you know, can you go talk to your dude and, you know, see, like, does he want to get a permit? What's the process like? What's OCCM like to work with? Because I get approached with consulting projects quite regularly in other states. And he had a conversation with this gentleman and he's currently renting out to what they call in New York a bodega, which is a corner store. And, you know, they sell weed out the back door, right, illicitly. And, and the guy said, I don't want to get a permit because if I get a permit, my customers know that weed was grown in a warehouse in Albany and they want California weed. And so there's actually like an inherent, you know, I don't want to, it's not, it's, it's, it's sort of a lack of, how do you say? There's a lack of incentive to get those permits because by virtue of state productions being siloed, you're not able to meet consumer demand. And so the immediate workaround is to take California genetics and grow them in those states. And as per recent federal guidance, we can now do that, which is kind of why there's this push towards less biomass production, less, you know, consumer packaged good manufacturing and more focusing on IP development for lease for use in other states, which is a very interesting sort of a development that happened, I don't know, maybe eight months ago was when the feds changed their rule on that. So that's, the tourism and the genetics pivot are the big changes as far as the cannabis project goes. The other big thing that I really wanted to make clear today, which some of you are also already aware of, is that the project is, is going to be scaled down from our, what we initially talked about because the investment and development group have found that many of the acres of the 56 that we have, quite frankly, the highest and best use is not cannabis. So there's going to be significantly more off-highway retail. We're in talks with a company that's looking to develop infrastructure for charging stations for semis, which Daryl and I were talking about this at Rotary today, you know, the, as I'm pretty sure everyone's aware, the state of California passed a law that over the next five to 10 years, they're going to try and force fleet companies to electrify more and more of their semi trucks. And there are companies looking for fairly large parcels, you know, between five to 10 acres to develop what they're calling the next generation of truck stops. And basically, it's not like the Tesla charging station that's going to go on North Weed where the car comes in and plugs in and you wait till it's charged. It's more like the truck comes in, they take the empty battery out, like a Jiffy Lube, swap the battery out, plug a new battery in, truck's back on the road. Technology's not quite there yet, but they're trying. So there's going to be a lot more non-cannabis uses. The front vista retail strip is going to be a bit more robust than we like initially kind of talked about in those, in those development agreement plans. We've got some really interesting opportunities with nationwide tenants for things like fast casual dining, you know, yeah, just outward-facing, non-cannabis retail, you know, whatever it is. That's not really my department. And again, one of the big things that I wanted to come here and say is that like, the way things are moving forward, we're still the boots on the ground. We still are the company, but, you know, we have a board of investors that we answer to, which is great progress because if we didn't have that, there'd be no project. So that's pretty much it. With that, if you guys have any questions, I'm here.
I have several questions, Mr. Strack.
Sure, go for it.
First, do you own 75% or this company or company? Do they, they own 75%?
The 75% thing was put in there because we had an option on an additional two acres. We're going to own all 56 acres. Like, that's, that's not.
My question is, do you own 75%?
No, not yet.
Okay, that's part of your agreement, right?
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is that.
So have you done any SEQA? Has SEQA been done?
We did actually initiate the process of SEQA. We, I mean, we talked with the new city planner several times. Quite frankly, because the plans were still in flux as far as what components of the land were going to be for what land uses, you know, the basics in terms of drainage calculations, I know we submitted all the drainage calculations, the power's already been undergrounded and stuff like that. So the development agreement project, which again, will be scaled down from the initial acreage proposed, still has to go through SEQA. Everything else that I'm talking about in terms of like a broader sort of, those are all uses by right, right? So those don't necessarily have to go through a full SEQA because they're uses by right in light industrial. So things like the front retail strip, things like, you know, I mean, not, not a huge truck stop, but like, there's a truck car wash that's really.
Right.
So those ones are going to be, those are going to end up being separate subsidiaries that we own a part of, but that are under the parent company. Those are not going to be like things that I have direct involvement, quite frankly.
Well, let me ask you though. See, here's another thing too I noticed in there. You had to have a rezoning through the municipal. Has that been done? Has that been looked at?
The plan unit of development, the new city planner actually thinks that we ought, that we ought not pursue that particular model, which is something that we talked about at, in pretty robust detail, whatever, six months ago. That was, oh, God, I mean, I, you know, we talked about this a bunch. That was a holdover from, from former city manager Stock, right? That's what he wanted to do.
Again, in your contract.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm not trying, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, that was a model.
I'm asking, I'm going to ask these questions because I have a concern for it.
Sure.
My thing is, is some years ago, there were five other council people up here and they all supported a five-zero vote. So, and that's, that's fine. But that was an investment. They invested in your company.
Sure did.
Where's the return? I have not seen a return. But you're also telling me now that you're not the full owner.
Well, yeah, of course. We were never going to be, I mean.
Okay, well then, then we signed the contract that that's not what it says.
No, we take on investors. This is the way entrepreneurship works. You take on investors, the board structure changes. The intention of the company and the assets of the company don't change. My role might change. I'm not exactly sure. But at the end of the day, I mean, that's, that's how companies are built and developed. And I guess like, it's been two and a half years. We've put a ton of work into it. We got fairly far down the road in terms of land use planning until we came upon sort of a pitfall whereby we really needed to cement exactly what land uses were going where before we could move forward. But, you know, I'd say that process is a good, you know, 20, 25% down the, down the path. You know, listen, Love's is a multimillion-dollar privately-held company that doesn't need to raise investment capital to do what they want to do.
Absolutely. It's a completely different.
Right, right.
Business and adventure that it has.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to be a jerk here, but I'm talking about your business.
The parallel that I was trying to draw is that in the grand scheme of things, two and a half years for a project of this magnitude is really not a ton of time.
But nothing's been done.
Actually, no, a lot has been done. We've.
But what's been done?
Again, some of that I can't really talk about, but suffice it to say that we've brought on development partners, we've brought on finance partners, we filed a fair bit of paperwork with the city in terms of, specifically in terms of drainage calculations, utilities, site survey, the various lot line adjustments that are contemplated in the development agreement, including specifically the front retail strip as well as the off-highway, the 16 acres of off-highway that's south of Commerce Court.
Right.
You know, so that all took a lot of time and dollars. And I mean, you know, Tim knows better than anybody else, you know, up, up until eight months ago, when we hit, I'll be blunt, we lost two investors to projects on the East Coast. So like, I literally went from having, you know, sign documents that would have put us over the edge to where we would have really broken ground. And unfortunately, those two entities at the 11th hour, sort of at the altar, it was a very disappointing day, or a couple of days, they put their money towards a project in New Jersey and New York respectively. And I, there's nothing I could do about that.
No, there isn't nothing that you can do. I, I, I mean, my concern is, you own property out there, but now you have partners. Is that kind of, you're in negotiations?
Well, no.
Did you always have those partners? I don't, what I'm not trying to get at is a contract that I'm reading.
Yeah.
It's expired anyway.
The partners bought into the company that the development agreement is with. So.
It doesn't say that on here.
I don't really understand how that is the.
It's under your name.
That's a land use and planning document.
Well, isn't that Highly Sensible Logistics is your company? Is that one of your companies?
One of, yeah.
Okay, that one there is not in. And then you have a new one, right? Turbine, is that another?
Well, Turbine Station and Highly Sensible Logistics were, again, through Mr. Stock's effort, issued standalone permits on a 3.28 acre parcel. So out of the 56 acres, there's currently five parcels when the development agreement contemplates the creation of two additional parcels. So those were kind of pushed through by Ron. It was at the time, it seemed like a good idea, quite frankly, in retrospect, given the state of the market, just in terms of market forces, it really wasn't a good idea.
Right.
I mean, they still exist. They still have their permits. Whether or not we act upon those permits or abandon them is going to be a question of land use in terms of like highest and best and what we can look at for alternative uses for the land asset as a whole. So, I mean, you're looking at a land use document, but I think your line of questioning is more about the finances of the company. And again, that's kind of the part I really.
My, my questioning is, again, I know they had the pandemic and it's officially over.
I heard that.
But, you know, things were going on during that time and I'm going by your scales, at this particular point, 2023, it should be making hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue for the city.
I, I actually would respectfully disagree with that. And I think that there's an analogy to be had with the Gant chart comment that was made by the earlier gentleman, right? We know once we start what the order of operations are. We don't know when we're going to be able to start because that's a financial question. And as I opened with, the lack of access to capital on a, on a, on a banking scale is what's holding us back. I mean, listen, if that law had changed like we all kind of thought it was going to within six to 12 or 12 to 18 months of the development agreement passing, we would be in a very different position right now because we literally had conversations with credit unions and banks that we had gotten basically, you know, kind of like what was being discussed where you have everything ready to go for the minute you're given the green light. And that green light still has not come. So I, you know, like, raising money privately is very difficult.
I bet it is.
It's not my background. I, we have a great CFO. We have great financial advisors that are, you know, working their tails off on things like that. But it really is one of those situations where we have plans that when we get that green light, we will initiate, including obviously the development agreement, but now also kind of broader development in terms of like a retail component, off high, specifically off-highway stuff, right? Like.
One question, I'll quit hounding you on this.
No, no, it's.
But how did you get a Department of Cannabis Control a license on that location when there's no, no sticks, no mortar? There's nothing was built. How does that, how do you, how did that happen?
That's state law. You, you, there's a difference between a license and an occupancy certificate. So we don't have an occupancy certificate. There's no business operations going on. But just like with any business, you can apply for a business license prior to you finishing the, you know, what you would generally call tenant improvements, right?
I've been hoping there have been some sticks or some, something out there at this particular point.
You and me both.
There's a lot of sticks out there. They're just not doing. It's not the right sticks.
You and me both. And seriously, I mean, like, I, you know, it, it was a very, very sort of a, when federal laws didn't change as we expected them to, we knew that we were going to be behind the eight ball. We thought we had found the money privately. Those entity chose to apply those resources to projects in other states that, quite frankly, their concerns were about development in California and how notoriously difficult that is. I mean, these are the same struggles that we're all facing as a community with building anything in California.
I have some quick questions for you, Ray.
Sure, of course.
Are these, are the new funding, is that solid yet or is that still in?
I mean, yeah, some of it's solid. Some of it we're still in negotiations on, you know, we're, we're talking about several tens of millions of dollars in multiple parties. It's, it's basically, you know, it's what you would call a joint venture.
So just for clarification, how solid, how much money is kind of solid right now?
I can't disclose that, actually.
Okay. Will you be doing a SEQA?
Again, on the development agreement, under California state law, that has to go through SEQA. In terms of what I've described for the other non-cannabis uses as uses by right, those are going to depend on square footages, proximity to other businesses and all the other sort of normal components that go into.
So you don't anticipate any rezoning?
Well, the rezoning is, it's, I don't know how, how do you best describe this? So Ron, when we first wrote up the development agreement, Ron wanted to have the cannabis facility be a PUD. The new city planner thinks that that was a very boneheaded idea, but quite frankly, that ship has sailed, right? Unless we were to redraft this entire thing, which, you know, perhaps, perhaps that's the best pass forward. But what stands right now is that whatever component of the 56 acres ends up being for the project described in the development agreement, regardless of the actual physical footprint of it, that will have to go through SEQA. What we came to find out through the initial looking of the SEQA process is that because the land uses contained in the development agreement are objectively less intensive than those already allowed as uses by right in light industrial, there are several components of SEQA where it's, I don't want to oversimplify it, but it's almost like if this applies, you know, if yes, explain, if no, move on, we're a no, right? We don't. We don't necessarily have to go through some of the rigmarole because we don't have sensitive dwellings, we're not adjacent to residential, we already have city power, or, excuse me, we already have undergrounded power, you know, city sewer and water, run along Vista, they're stubbed down Black Butte, Black Butte is not an, an easement to other, it's not a thoroughfare easement, right? It's a dead-end private road, it's technically an abandoned road, so we don't have to do some of the traffic impact studies, because there's, there shouldn't be going, there should be no one going down there anyway, unless you own that land or you're Union Pacific going out to the rail yard, or you're Public Works or the police office.
So you're going to keep the same acreage then, that you've been leasing?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're like, and again, the seventy-five percent thing, that, that was put in there as a, I don't even know how to describe it, it was, is with your, your colleague Ryan, whose last name escapes me at the moment, and that was because there was a chance that the acreage actually went up, not because the acreage would have gone down. We do not have the ability within our lease option and purchase sale agreement to buy any less than.
But you're still under lease?
Yeah, yeah, we're under lease and option with a purchase sale agreement that we actually, again, if this had been next month, I might be at liberty to disclose a lot more, because once we finalize the corporate bylaws of the joint venture that takes ownership of the asset that's currently held by, by, it's called Jigsaw, is the, the company that actually holds the land, which is the, it's got a, it's called a services agreement, right? It's like a, like a tenant landlord type of relationship. Uh, once that goes through and we actually have bylaws that are filed with the California Secretary of State, you know, then that becomes public record, and I can talk a lot more in detail about what the timeline is and what that Gantt chart looks like, so.
Will we require, acquire a new, uh, development plan? Or does the one that exists stay?
One that's in here now is expired.
Well, I know it's expired, but all we got to do is approve it.
This, yeah.
There's a development agreement that, with this project, yeah.
That development agreement, I mean, that, that plan applies to that development.
What if the, what if the development agreement has expired?
Development agreement hasn't expired, it just, it hasn't been triggered yet.
Hasn't been triggered, okay.
It's not yet effective.
Correct, yes.
Contracted this Shasta Jefferson's.
It doesn't.
Five percent of the.
It doesn't own seventy-five percent.
Once it, once it owns that seventy-five percent, and that triggers all of the obligations.
Okay.
And that's because under California law, a lease, a lease with an option is not enough standing to pursue a rezone or pursue a development agreement, we have to own the land fee simply.
I just don't agree with it, but neither here nor there.
So Ray, um, I know you're under NDA and you can't disclose a lot of things as you're putting together your, your corporate governance, do you have an anticipated timeline when you can let us know, um, what that level of funding is, the ownership impact and the?
I would say that I will be able to disclose those details within the next, I don't know, thirty to sixty days.
Okay, so, so it'd be fair to, to ask you back in ninety days then?
I mean, first, I mean, I had told Tim this, you know, I, I didn't know today's agenda was going to be so robust. I had fully planned on, you know, delivering the good news, so to speak, whenever we did, you know, finally uh, pay down the remainder of what we all own the land, and once we sort of firmed up what our tenant obligations look like, and what component of the land is going to be operated under the auspices of the development agreement versus what components of the land are going to be more, you know, like I said, non-cannabis outward-facing retail, off-highway commercial type development, the kind of stuff you expect to see in South Weed.
And the business climate has changed, right?
Business climate has changed dramatically, um, you know, uh, with any luck, if, again, if the SAFE Act passes, that'll be great for us long-term, but, you know, in conjunction with these tourism, specifically with construction development and tourism development partners, we've been act, we've been able to get um, term sheet offers for, for fairly affordable, uh, debt for, for construction, which is, you know, kind of how it has to go down. And again, that's not my academic background, uh, not really my professional background, but man, am I getting a crash course.
Any other questions, by counsel?
Mr. Mayor, Ray, um, when we, uh, talk about what's going, you know, what's coming down, down the line, things that you originally, you know, like, uh, Councilman mentioned that there was five of us that approved and decided to go with you, not decided to go with you, the big thing with jobs.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, that was the motive, that was, that was our motive, and we did whatever we could to, you know, to try to get some livable wage jobs in here, uh, as we, when you come back, I mean, obviously, things have changed now as far as looking at the job situation that, that, that this project would provide. Do you have, would you, I wouldn't think you have it now, but can you come back with, you know, the comparison of what the plan was and now how it's changed?
Um, and you know, again, SJGB is still mandated to operate under the auspices of the DA, so the minimum entry level wages stay the same, the bi-annual job fair stays the same, the partnership with COS for the jobs training program stays the same. I can't speak to what happens with potential tenants, like, say, for instance, if, you know, Chili's wanted to open up in the retail strip on Vista, you know, I, I don't have any control over what that company does in terms of their labor policies. I don't have any control over how many tenants there are in that development and what those job numbers look like. What I can tell you from the cannabis perspective is that the market, you know, this project, and I think, you know, we were, we, we talked about this at extraordinarily, extraordinary length, this project was always designed to be an export project, right? It was always designed to satiate the desire for Northern California cannabis to the nation and the world. We expected those laws to change faster, they have not. That's why this genetics component is a great workaround, because not only is it authorized by the federal government under the farm bill, uh, and while it doesn't create quite as many jobs as a huge, huge, grandiose greenhouse that's pumping out raw cannabis flower, what it does provide is the revenue to the city, because it keeps the, the core value proposition of the appellation in play. And so while it might not create as many jobs, it will arguably create more revenues for the city, because what we're focusing on is the genetics and not necessarily the consumer packaged good that someone ends up buying in a store in LA. Does that make sense? Okay?
Thanks, Ray.
Everybody knows that I got ahold of me. Yeah, yeah, no, definitely, I mean, perhaps sooner, I'll, yeah.
Thanks, Raymond. I second.
Any public comment on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've had a motion to.
Motion, we've had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, on, I thought I was doing so good on asking the audience, damn it. Item number eight, council business. Item A, discussion item only, public nuisance, discussion with, with the staff regarding public nuisance properties. Got to put my glasses on, give directions to staff on how to proceed.
John, you're on.
You could have showed up at seven and been on time.
Pemberton, Building Inspector, City of Weed, um, I've got a short PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, good.
As the course of the winter went on, several staff, staff members and myself were, I guess, disheartened by the condition. Or I go much further, I'd like to say that I spoke to Mr. Germain. Okay, uh, Nathaniel, do we have PowerPoint going? Thank you. I've gone around recently and taken photos of areas of concern within Weed. Are around the Quality Inn. See, we've got some serious issues there. Building behind the Quality Inn that Justin can tell you about is kind of a headache for the police department. That building needs to be condemned. Effect of the whole condition of the area. Vital town to the county. Lot of revenue through the City of Weed in terms of college salaries, we've got Rosenberg salaries. Town should not look like this. That's the Burger King trash. That's embarrassing. Building up on Arbaugh Street. Building again on Arbaugh Street, that's what it looks like. Building up on Phelps Avenue where somebody is living in. Building on South Weed Boulevard.
Oh, I like that little, that's a nice effect, you do that?
This is obviously our big sore point in downtown. That's the front of the building on Arbaugh that needs to be condemned. Heightened this building about a year ago. Same building, and has no airs, so we're trying to figure out what we can do. Back of a building on Main Street, just.
Travelers.
That's our new parking lot, I'm parked in the parking lot. That's where we're at, we have to do something, this town has too much money in it to let it look like this. Al tourists where we're so far from, you can't even hear the traffic.
We got a question from, what, what tools can, can we provide for you to make a bigger impact on this?
Back us.
Well, looking at that, I think that's a no-brainer in mind, because I did it for years. I did the same thing with the police department.
Right, you can back us so that when we cite somebody administratively, that they don't come to you and say, hey, we're being picked on. That's, Justin can tell you, that's what we need.
Well, yeah, my, my back.
I don't, I don't think there's much concern with that issue. It's just how far can you stretch the legality of what we do? Do we need, do we need to implement any ordinances that give better teeth? In other words, so that technically the city law backs, backs you.
Here's what we're doing, you know, I also work for the City of Tule Lake. Every, everybody that owns a house or a lot in Tule Lake signed by the police chief, fire chief, the mayor, and myself.
Maybe we need a stiffer muni code, more of a punishment, something to get somebody's attention.
Do, do.
I think that's what he's asking for, do we have to create something, David?
Um, you guys recently.
Oh. You can recite them.
But can we come up with a muni code that has a little more bite to it and not an infraction, a misdemeanor?
Now, this is for, this is for.
Well, I mean, misdemeanor is a little bit better than a infraction, maybe slap you on the hand and they'll fine you five hundred, and they do nothing, I saw that personally working, David.
With it being a criminal issue, A is that there's likely no one to prosecute. Authorize me to do it and pay me.
But we'd be going backwards.
Or as most small cities do, it's in the hands of the DA.
Well, I understand.
In most cases, you know, there's obviously.
I do, I understand the process and what is going to be done, what isn't going to be done, but you have to get the folks' attentions here on, on these things, I mean, and, um, I don't know, leans on houses, properties, I don't know, but there's got to be something, this is, this is absolutely.
We have all of those.
I, I will also tell you that John doesn't have them all. I, I go around and, and look at homes all the time, in particular.
I have hundreds of photographs, I just grabbed twenty because I didn't want to be here all night.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, what we're talking about here is a culture. Our community, we have dropped the ball regarding, and, and culturally, we, we, we don't, uh, we accept these type of things, we just have, and a, a culture is like anything else, is even more important. If you don't, you know, a new culture will take its place, and what the new culture is, wherever I drop it, that's where it stays, but we can, I mean, what you're doing here, what you're saying is, hey, this, you know, it's not necessarily about even picking on anybody, it's just a, culturally, you know, our community lets, can, can we get clean? Can we start thinking about, you know, uh, even, I mean, we even have a lot of people that, 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 uh, don't, don't take care of the yards, they don't take care of their porches, they don't take, because it's a culture, it's just become, you know, slowly digressed to the point where, uh, we accept these things, and I think you're in the right mo, you're on the, you know, as far as support, I don't think there's, there's any doubt that the, that the, uh, council's not going to support you. I mean, we, 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 we need to do something like this, and, and, and it's the betterment of the community. And it's not pointing the finger at anybody, it's just saying, we can get better together.
I agree.
And, and just, if I can inject one quick thing here, I think what it's also going to take, mayor and council, is, you know, I, I think, uh, budgetarily, it's always been a challenge, but I think going forward, we're going to have to start setting aside some demolition money every year. Um, I worked for a city that we averaged between eight to ten demolitions a year, and it was something, as part of the culture of the city, we just. And it was something, as part of the culture of the city, we just said, we're not going to put up with this crap. We're going to go forward, we're going to pressure you as hard as we can, and we're going to demo your house if you don't, you know. And quite frankly, that's what it takes for some of these, some of these houses just need to be demoed. There's, there's really not much to salvage, I mean, we've got folks that have just literally abandoned property and we're having to chase them down, but eventually, I think we're going to have to do that, we're going to start setting aside budget every single year to demo. And then I think once, maybe some of the other homeowners, like, well, they're not messing around anymore, I mean, and, you know, I don't want to get my house demoed, even though it's a rent house, I still would prefer not to do it. So I, I think it sets a, a tone there that we're, not that we're coming in and just, you know, being heavy handed for a select few, but just across the board, we have to have those expectations, you want to live in our city, you're going to have to clean up your property. And if you don't want to clean up your property, we're going to abate it, then we're going to put a lien on it, and then if it's in an extreme situation, we're going to demo it, so.
So I have a question for council, so I own one of the businesses on Main Street, who is right across the alley from one of the abandoned houses, it's full of trash. And twice in the last week, Weed PD has come, has had to deal with people trespassing, we've had a car abandoned on the property, we've had people building shelters against our building and feeding cats, and I'm thankful that Weed PD was able to resolve those timely without any, any issues. But in the case of like that house back there, because I dealt with this with a neighbor to our ranch in Gazelle, you know, the person dies, the county takes five plus one years before it goes up for public auction, it's not like Sacramento County, we can go in two years later and pay cash for it. We have the liquidity to buy that property and rehabilitate it, or build, make a parking lot for our employees, but we can't touch it until the county gets to that five plus one year mark. So when we have people locally that have, you know, capital to invest, are willing to do these cleanups, what can we do when our hands are tied, you know, by the county to, with these abandoned properties? Where there is no air that's come apparent, I mean, my, my attorney, the way he put it to us is that, you know, there's always an air if you look far enough. So, and I talked to the Cessar's office, they won't let us move on it within that six year period, so.
Talking about the waiting for it to come up.
For it to come up for public auction, yeah.
If we're proactive. And get them before they die.
The thing that I've seen done is if the city is a creditor to the property owner, for example, delinquent water. And the city has standing to initiate that which, in which the air search happens, and, and if there's no air, you know, basically. That way you at least get that process moving for that title to the deed to that house is in someone's hands that you can actually talk to and.
Right.
Check squatters. That's one, one option that I've seen.
Because we have several local business owners who have tried to invest in the dilapidated buildings downtown or other properties, who either the owner is deceased and the county won't move, or the owner's not willing to sell, so those buildings can be rehabilitated and turned into profitable businesses for our town. And that, that's where, as, as a councilperson, as a person who lives here, as a citizen for decades and, and a business owner, it's a huge frustration for me that those of us who want to invest in the town can't, and we have to look at this every day, so.
If it is the case of a decedent, then probably, usually the fastest way is to, if you have that way, there's a person who has the deed who can then sell it to the willing.
So we just send them a water bill? I'm, I'm joking, but I'm serious.
Yeah, you need to be a creditor.
Okay, well, a water bill makes us a creditor.
Well, they have to have an account, obviously, but.
We understand your frustration, I mean, I think one of John, John's things, especially those downtown properties, it has been a huge eyesore for so long, over 20 years.
That, that starts the culture, that starts, but that influences the culture a lot, what's going on in Main Street. It really does, I mean, a community, you judge a community by, you drive down to Main Street to see, see what's going on.
You want to live there?
Yeah, that's.
Well, this looks like you don't care. So if we don't care, they don't.
Well, it, it, and it's very frustrating, because we've been working on this, I've been working on this thing for 15 years.
I know that, Bob, I know that.
And we haven't, here, here again, we haven't gotten very far, you know, I mean, because of, like Daryl's talking about, I mean, it, it's just, everything is tied up, I mean.
Need more bite.
Yes, somehow we.
Justin, did you have something to say?
Yeah, so I'd asked this to be a discussion item primarily for the two residences, 22 Division and 333 Arbaugh. 333 Arbaugh has been in that condition for, well, as long as I've worked here, so they haven't had water at that residence that we know of since 2019. The owner had moved to Washington, deceased, there were two sons, one of them has passed away since. We have been in contact with one son, he doesn't want anything to do with the property since, since we've basically told him what condition it's in. That being said, I'm looking for direction from you on these two properties, what do you, we can write an inspection warrant, board them up, see what happens in six years after the property taxes are delinquent. Or the other option is, is to, I think it, the recommendation of the city attorney was to look for a local real estate attorney to handle this probate process. Family law, to start the probate process, what he was mentioning with the water bill. So we just need to know what.
Yes.
We need council to realize, though, that there is going to be a cost here, especially 333 Arbaugh, the current evaluation by the building department is it will be a teardown. If we have to do that, we're going to pay for it. Not sure what, what, if it's a rehabbable house there on 22 Division, but there's going to be a cost right now, just with the inspection warrant to board it up, there's a public health issue with the garbage bags that we don't know what are in there out in the front yard. So there's going to be a, a cost of just the cleanup of that, so there's going to be some, some costs that the city incurs here. That's why I'm looking for direction, how far do you want to take it? Are we just going to board it up and wait six years, or are we going to?
No.
No. Okay.
I, I, I think we.
We should be able to special assessment or a lien on the property in respect to that, all of the costs that.
Right, but we're, we're talking about putting a lien on a piece of property that's really going to have no value. This one may have more value, I, honestly, that parcel in, in Angel Valley is not going to have a high value because it's such a small parcel.
Its value is in having it removed.
It is, so I just want to. We're just looking for direction on those. As far as the other properties on there, yeah, there are owners that we can, Quality Inn has already been cited multiple times. I believe they've paid those tickets, as far as I've been told.
Can we cite them? Our attorney has suggested that we cite them every single day.
And that's where we're at with that, I mean, what you don't see at the Quality Inn is half that building was flooded last year when the sprinkler system, so it's, it's much more damage than you can imagine.
So they'd rather pay fines, repeated fines, than just clean it up?
They are not good business people, I used to be more diplomatic, but they are not good business people. And I'll just call it the way it is, that's the way it is.
That's being nice.
So our, I'm sorry. So our fine is $50 for the first day. And then if, on, on Monday, and then if they don't do anything Tuesday, it's another $50, how, what is, what is that?
It's escalating.
So Tuesday's $100?
So this is for violation for infraction, the first.
First day.
First day, the second day is 200.
Okay.
The third day is 500, and it's 500. Every day for that year, so it's, if you have three or more violations in one year. And then if it's a, if it's a violation of building and safety. Then it goes 100, 500, 1,000.
For day three.
Correct. I mean, there, there is, there's a due process issue here, so I have certainly seen cases where they didn't allow you to impose the second tier until you gave.
So some of these buildings are owned by, you know, people that are just down the street. So what, can we start doing that on a daily basis to some of these places that we know who owns them? And then we'll make enough money to tear down the one on Division and the one on Arbaugh?
Most of these people don't have any money, that's why they're not fixing the buildings.
No, not the Division and the Arbaugh people, we're going to charge the other people that might live down the street. And, because we know that they're alive and apparently drive cars and stuff, so they must have money to buy gas. So we'll start fining those that, that maybe drive a Tesla.
We have to be a, don't, don't we have to be a creditor?
No, I'm talking about some of. Right, citations every day, and if it's at 50 and 100 and 500, then we'll make enough money to start tearing things down.
If they owe us money from a citation, does that make us a creditor? Or not? But I still, I'm still a little bit with Sue here, if we, there's a few people that have other properties that I'm sure they're, they're going to pay. Just the tools. Which one do you like, John?
Well, in Tulley Lake.
Justin?
In Tulley Lake, we've done an initial notice and given them 30 days. Dollars, it started $100 and gone up. Already seen results. So that's, in my mind, we need to do something similar here.
But if we find somebody, let me get this straight, if we find somebody $100, he has the ability to go to, we used to have an administrative judge, I don't know if we still have one on, on, is that Aiello?
No.
Somebody else now?
Some guy from Southern California is.
Okay. No, no, but if we have an administrative judge, he can hear the case, just in case the guy wants to go to court? And then he could possibly want to appeal?
There's due process involved with all of these remedies, so. At, you have the opportunity to.
But we will rely on the fact that most people won't even do that, that's what, with some of these properties, that's what I'm thinking.
I think that's a fair and equitable thing to do, is to give people a 30 day notice, so the people who need help can go to charitable organizations or service organizations like Rotary and ask for support. I mean, we were out just a couple of weekends ago with 30 volunteers in Rotary cleaning up, you know, refuse and.
Garbage.
Some disgusting, you know, human waste and things like that in South Weed for half a day. So certainly if somebody came to a group like ours or some other group and said, hey, I can't afford this, I have a 30 day notice, I need to get this fixed, there's enough people in this town that would stand up and fix that, but the people who have no intention of getting it fixed, then, you know, we've given them a 30 day chance, at that point, we began to levy the fines. You know, because either they're deceased or they just don't care.
Right, 30 days is actually more than is necessary under the code, for example, building code violations that do not pose an imminent threat.
Right, but I mean, we, we live in an economically depressed county and are coming out of a pandemic, so to speak, so I think 30 days is, is more than fair, you know, we're doubling our code.
That's nice.
Because, like I said, there are people in this community that will need assistance, and that gives them time to seek that assistance. In the case of some of these locations, like the one behind our building, where it's full of trash and it is a, a public safety issue, I think we need to move with due speed. Because anything that's going to impose, you know, a, a health or, or fire danger to our citizens needs to be addressed. The last thing we need is a vagrant lighting a building on fire behind Main Street and burning the town down for the third time in the last decade.
So I think what John is asking tonight is that code enforcement and his job is only as strong as the council will allow. Oh, so it, it's only as strong as you guys will allow it to be, because you're going to get calls.
I hope so, I hope one of these people call me.
Call me.
Please call me.
Okay, that's, that's what he needs to know.
Phone number on the outside of the building.
Fine, call me.
Okay, that's good.
Stop by when we open in August at 280 Main Street and come see me in person.
With all due respect to the council.
Oh.
That the code enforcement, you know, your job is to adopt the resolute, the ordinances.
Which we have.
Provide for what violates the code and what the remedies are. Enforcement is really staff's.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and if those people show up here whining.
And so sometimes staff has a problem when they hear council members put, have, you know, have to put pressure on them to do their job one way or another. And obviously, if there's a policy decision that you, that, that is within your scope, but when it comes to a particular property.
I, I believe that we'll stand behind our code enforcement, Justin and John.
I just wanted to make sure that we were clear, as we move forward, especially with these two residences, the city's going to be incurring a cost.
And I had a way to swap.
No, I'm.
I had a way to fix that.
Just go down and price a sheet of plywood right now, it's going to take 10 sheets of plywood to board these places up, so.
Just remember, if they make an appeal, don't go soft.
We're going to, we're going to be paying a garbage service to put a dumpster there, so we can clean this garbage up under a, under a warrant, an inspection warrant, so.
And if we start fining the other ones, not the dead people, then we'll make the money.
As was stated, creating a bank in the future, we don't have a bank now, so we don't have a code enforcement budget. The budget is CSOs and salaries, but we don't actually have a budget to pay for those things, so just be aware, there's going to be some costs.
Make a budget, get some money in it.
It gets worse, it never gets better, it never fixes. So cover your costs now and take care of these problems.
So I think in the case of this discussion only item, we have a unanimous amount, a, a group of us on the DS that want to support those two properties for public safety.
Please don't think that, so I was just explaining to Craig here that just yesterday alone, I signed four public nuisance letters. So it's not just these properties, it's all over town and it's constant, so things are being done.
And as Bob spoke.
Just these are the, the worst ones that don't seem to respond to anything.
It's a little bit of a culture that we need to nurse along a little bit better. Public, any public comment? They got, they got you doing, they got them doing it.
I have a little more to say.
I think we do have public comment.
I don't know if it's public comment back there, I can't see anybody if they're waving hands. Come on up front, hon. Yeah, come on, I'm supposed to use hon, I say that to my wife all the time, that's condescending, she tells me. It's just, I, I was growing up, like, somebody slapped me sometimes.
I was just actually trying to understand, because my understanding is that there is already a process in place to find repeated offenders for not taking care of the property.
Right.
And is that being enforced and is it being collected?
That is, what we are discussing is how far we want to take that enforcement. And we are going to go full, full tilt or whatever you want to call it, full speed ahead on, on doing that, because it's just, it's getting out of hand. And potentially, there's help for people if they ask for it, we've tried that several times. But maybe if we get a little bit more emphasis on it, we'll get a little help. And we can get people help if they, if they want it.
I have another question, but it doesn't pertain to this, but since I'm up here.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Smith asked a question regarding the safety of the community in respect to Roseburg. And council, the council member, I believe it's Daryl, mentioned that he hoped to see the same robust excitement with the county and their meeting. But I would hope that the council would be a part of it also in pushing toward the county who is responsible for Roseburg and the oversight of that mill to ensure the safety of the citizens in the community. And that's my question, is that going to take place? Is there talks in place? Because certainly, we can go to the county meetings and whatever, but it would be great to have our council also express their concerns about the oversight of Roseburg or the lack of oversight over Roseburg.
I would agree totally. I would agree totally that there is a lack of oversight. However, not even however, there is a lack of oversight. We do not have a full-fledged report yet. I believe things will happen potentially if, when the report is released, and that'll be done probably at the county level, not at the city level, because the infraction or whatever, this decided it will be at the county level.
So the hangup right now is that the CAL FIRE, which is the organization oversees, you know, this issue because it's on county land, has not issued the report formally on, on the cause and effects of basically what began the mill fire. So there is no real action that can be taken, other than public comment until that is done, and that is done, and we have that report. I would be happy to join you at a county supervisor meeting and have a discussion once that report's in our hands.
Okay, I understand, and that's fair. I just want to make sure that that's a conversation that's had. And I understand that, you know, you can't do anything until the actual reporting cause of the fire is settled. But I just want to make sure that our council is involved, along with the county, to ensure that the residents are safe. We're talking about investing hundreds of thousands of dollars back into the rebuilding of our homes, and we don't want it to happen again because of negligence.
And every one of us up here is a resident and citizen in this town. And so we are.
And Roseburg has even made very, as far as I can see, very diligent efforts already to clean up that property. I, I mean, if you look, if you've been over there and you look across, I don't know where you live.
I live at 1090 Railroad, approximately 800 feet.
Okay.
From where Chad 17 was.
So you know that big white building that I'm talking about?
I know exactly. I do see.
And the one behind it? Those are all gone. I personally was glad to see them go, as far as, you know, their appearance. I believe that is a, that allevi, that creates a safety margin. So I'm still curious as to when I see smoke, where they're currently storing their, their waste, their biomass waste. I don't know if we've ever found out. Have we found out?
Yeah. It was, it was asked, once we saw the smoke go back up again, immediately that raised a lot of alarms. And so I did contact the representative from Roseburg. They sent me a, and I believe I forwarded to the council, this has been a few months ago, when they kicked it back up, but they have a, a system in place now where the ashes and the waste is going into these metal containers, and then they're hauling them away. Rather than have the ashes do what they did last time, they're containing them, doing something, like I said, that, and they sent us the entire protocol, safety, everything of what they're doing now with the ashes, so.
So we have names of the organization that's overseeing the safety of the operation?
It's still the county, unfortunately, so.
So one of the other organizations.
I wish, we, we can't just barge in and take over.
I understand.
Yeah, but they, but so they have, unfortunately, that's, that's what it is. I, I mean.
So is there anyone monitoring?
I would imagine if they're transporting hot ash on a freeway, there, yeah, we're off topic again, but that's okay. But if we're off topic, but if you're transporting hot ash on a freeway, I'd be surprised if you didn't have to get some kind of ODOT report or some kind of state authority to do that. I mean, they, they regulate, they don't want that stuff on their freeways.
It falls under DOT CFR 47.
DOT thing.
And as far as otherwise, I, I've been in semiconductor and aerospace for 20 years, and I own a manufacturing company, so I'm very familiar and, and had been certified for 15 years with that. Also, they fall in the purview of Cal OSHA, as far as the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, not just for their employees, but for the stakeholders around their business. So.
But this was all in place also before the fire, right? They fell under those same jurisdictions?
But unfortunately, the DOT and Cal OSHA are not, we're kind of remote here, being on a border county. So if they don't hear from concerns from the employees, the business, or the stakeholders, they generally don't take action. Basically, until there's smoke, they don't think there's a fire. Pardon the analogy. So those are some avenues that, you know, may be worth looking into if you have concerns, and that's.
I have great concerns.
Yeah. All right, back up, John. Anyway, I think our conclusion was is that you have our blessings, as far as that is concerned. I believe Justin hears the same thing. So to move forward.
Thank you.
Is that enough direction? You want me to write a white paper on it? I mean, a draft paper, what they call, whatever.
White paper.
I think that's what they used to call it.
On another related note, but we've been talking about negative things. And I'd kind of like to end my time up here. We've got three strong retail businesses headed our way. Two buildings in Angel Valley, two houses that are being rebuilt. We have Robert, that has a permit that's approved. We have another permit that. We've got some good things to look forward to. We've got Councilman Parham starting a business in downtown Weed. We're doing okay. We could do a lot better, so.
Thanks, John. Thanks for your concern, actually. Moving on, on to item number, holy Toledo, B, public safety. By motion, consider Main Street closure on INES intersection to Division, to Division Street from 7 to 10 for the Steampunk Festival on May 20th, 2023. Approve waiver of WMC 9160010 and 16030, allowing sales and consumption of alcohol within the event boundaries. And that's on for sale, right? So no hauling it out of a bar, walking down Main Street, you have to buy it on Main Street?
You're waiving the consumption of alcohol within that border. That's what, what's been asked. They're going to, spoke with the event organizers just this morning and mentioned you need to have some signage to keep people from bringing alcohol into that event. So they're going to work on that.
Okay.
They've asked for the closures, standard closures posted 24 hours ahead with Public Works is, I mean, obviously, the cost is Public Works putting manpower, putting barricades out and cleanup. So it's, it's the standard event. We just had one last month, so there's nothing new. This one's not going to require any inlet to the US Bank or anything like that, like the last one, since it's on a weekend.
I saw you gave us a map, at least this time.
The event organizer provided a map, yeah. Fire have anything to add?
Oh, there was a fire lane too, right? Fire lane?
Well, they've asked, the fire department's asked, they've spoken to the event organizers. There was an issue with 420 and that a fire lane wasn't maintained, but we'll address that next year with them, but it's already been addressed with this event.
Perfect.
I make a motion to approve that.
Wait a minute. Are there any questions from the audience?
What were the comments?
Ray? He's the only guy left. Okay, now.
I make a motion to approve that Main Street closure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're moving on. On to item C, Public Works. By motion, consider approving Resolution 82023, adopt mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and report program for the Bowls Creek Stormwater Improvement Project. Can you make that shorter next time? Any discussion? Any report, Craig?
This is our, our Bowls Creek project we've been working on for a couple of years, longer than that. It's the upstream from Bowls Creek. We've got our environmental done here. We need to get approval for this to keep moving forward with permitting. We'll be coming back to you at a later date and give you an update where we're at and how we plan on moving forward.
So we're going to take care of that bottleneck?
That's the ultimate plan, the ultimate goal. And we don't have funding for it yet, but this will, this will help get our plans and specs and all our environmental ducks in a row, so we can move forward with that.
Be shovel ready. That was the.
Right.
Shovel ready was the word of the day.
That's right, shovel ready.
At the transportation meeting.
The chair will entertain a motion, unless there's more questions. Any questions from the audience? Ray? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve 082023.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition? Item D. I need to slow down, this is going to happen too fast now. Administration, by motion, consider approving contract with Tesla for charging stations located at 44 South Weed Boulevard and seek a notice of exemption. C attachment is what I put in there.
Yes. Mayor and council, as you all know, back in February of 2022, we purchased the lot at 44 South Weed from Valentina's LLC. We negotiated a sale price of $50,000 to help facilitate, to put a EV charging station lot in the heart of our North Weed Business District and Main Street there. We have met with Tesla, both online and in person, a couple of different times. We met with them about a month ago, I believe, and walked the lot. They have been going back and forth with our city attorney with, with the license agreement that you have before you tonight. And essentially, what this would do, would, they would install 16 supercharging posts at the site at no cost to the city of Weed. All we're going to be required to do, and our Public Works crew, we went out there and kind of did a test scoop out of the parking lot, and that's some extremely thin asphalt out there, so we don't think it's going to take very long. All they are requiring us to do is take it down to the dirt, and then they will install all the conduit and resurface the parking lot, stripe it, everything, ready to go. But, but, you know, there are some, you know, what, the devil's in the details. So, and we have a few issues that have been brought up by our city attorney in regards to the agreement. I will say, at, at one point, I did ask the representative from Tesla, because I, you know, I thought, well, if Tesla owned the lot, then this agreement would be kind of a moot point. He has told me that they're really not interested in owning real estate. So that's just not their business model, which, you know, I understand, they put these lots on usually private property.
Private property.
Or public property. In this case, they, they have partnered with several dozens of cities throughout the state of California. And can be somewhat, you know, difficult, because they kind of hold the cards, because they are the largest in the country, maybe the largest in the world when it comes to EV vehicles. And so it's a benefit for us to have this lot here, pulling off the interstate in 97. We think that it's going to create a, a great deal of traffic, and once those folks come in, as you know, they park, it may take 45 minutes to an hour to do a full charge, and then that's when they're going to be going to the gas stations, to the restaurants, walking downtown, spend more money in our, in our area. So it's a benefit in the fact that we have the, the charging stations here available for our visitors and for our residents, too. So, but saying that, I know, like I said, the city attorney had a few concerns, and that were shared with you earlier this week. And at this point, I would ask that if you have any questions in regards to your concerns or the concerns that were brought up by the city attorney, that we discuss those before we entertain the passing of this license agreement, so.
Mike, I don't really have a question. I do have a statement. Anytime private business gets involved with government and has to provide insurance documentation, it gets rather sticky from, from their insurance companies to the public agencies because of potential depth of pockets. So I, I read the language, and I'm going, boy, I've seen that 100 times, and I'm going, some companies will do it, some companies won't even touch it. The shrinking of the rating on the insurance company from an A15 to an A minus, hmm, tell you the truth, there ain't a whole lot of A15s out there anymore. And that's just the facts. You're going to be getting a lot of reratings in, probably in the next six months. And that's just, hopefully, we have a good summer. I want it to go private and just sell them the damn thing. That, that's kind of, if you sell the property, then we're, we still have the EVs, we still have, and we don't have to worry about when the hell they're tearing them down. You own the property, as long as you pay the property tax, we're good to go. So.
So if a private person owned that property, would they make money off of that? Would, like, how, how would, why, why would I want to do that?
They have different models, depending on what, what's out there, as far as any sort of sharing. You have to understand, Tesla, when I asked them, I said, what is the ROI on you guys building this? And he goes, decades. He said, we're not making money off of these things. He said, what we're, we're doing is, we're building our infrastructure base throughout the country, and that's what's going to sell more cars, the more of these superchargers, the, you know. So like I said, they're not making buku bucks off of these things. I had talked to one of our council members in Dunsmere at a Lola meeting, and he had expressed to me that it was going to cost him, he was going to go to a high school reunion in Chicago, it's going to cost him a total to drive from Dunsmere to Chicago of $96 in charging. So go do the math. I mean, they're not making a ton of money off of these things, so. And to answer your question, so they can do an agreement with, with, with a private entity to do that.
Do they, like, pay rent on the piece of property?
Mm-hmm. It's a land lease, usually.
It's probably a land lease, or it's, it may be some sort of revenue share of a slight, I don't know. But we looked at it as, we got the land fairly cheap.
Yeah.
And we, we need those charging stations. If you look at what's going on between the neighbors to the north, our neighbors to the south, they have big banks of these chargers in both of those, but they're on private property. But we look at it as the value of bringing people to our community off the freeway. As, you know, Councilmember Hall, as you alluded to earlier, they buy, the majority of the people that buy our gas come off the freeway. The majority of the people that are going to charge up on these things are going to come off the freeway, so.
What kind, what kind of return do we get on, I guess we don't get any. Is there a tax involved that the city gets from charging your car?
I don't believe so. David, you, have you heard anything? I don't think so.
So unlike a gas station, will we get sales tax?
Yeah. Well, what we get will be the, and the individual that was from Tesla kind of alluded to me, he said, the, the return that we're going to get is in our restaurants and our retail. They're going to go to the weed store and buy souvenirs, they're going to go to the Chevron and buy, you know, some food to hit, hit the road with, you know. I'd love for them to walk downtown once we get that thriving again and to, to shop down there. That's what, that's, that's, that's the key for it for us. It's not necessarily the, you know.
Sales tax.
Sales tax. Now, it's going to be, it's, yeah, it's going to be the sales tax from those sales.
The different places they go.
The different places that they go, so.
So I, I read through that, and it's all those things that David didn't like, I mean, those.
Well, I still don't like them.
You know, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't inform you about the risks of any transaction. That was my intent.
Right.
The, the fact is that these are all business judgments, these are not, they're about risk, weighing cost benefits, and that's your job to make them happen.
Right. And I mean, I read that, I thought the same thing. Well, you can see who's holding the cards here, but.
Well, I don't like that.
Well, I think they're.
I don't like that they're holding those cards. We're like responsible for everything. If something happens.
And this, I would say that in, from my understanding, well, and I think I included that, not unusual, I mean, this is how Tesla operates.
Yeah, that's, and, and they're all over the place. I mean, it's not like, why would that?
But I mean, if you have one in Mount Shasta, you have one in Wyrika, and then we need one in Weed, I, I'm just saying, what I'm looking at, I don't like what I'm reading on there, just for me. Just there, you don't need a two-thirds vote here, do you?
As a business owner, people who drive Teslas are going to support my business. That's kind of what we do.
Absolutely.
But as a council member, I have a duty to my constituents in my city, that we make sure that we protect our interests as a community.
Sure.
My concerns with the language in here, and I appreciate, you know, David, our, our city attorney, for, for bringing this to our attention, there are some things that I under- city attorney for, for bringing this to our attention. There are some things that I understand as a business owner that it makes sense. But the fact that we're not getting any kind of ROI other than private business downtown, you know, we're going to have, you know, wheels on our streets, degrading our roads, we're going to, you know, we're not charging rent for these things. My issue is that with like the removal of the equipment, I understand, I have NDAs, my company, I've done NDAs with others. I understand that they don't want the city, public works guys to take their charging stations, the technology out. But we need something in this contract that protects the city so that we don't end up with another downtown space that sits dilapidated for 20 years after their lease is up and they're done with it. Or if they fold as a company and some other company, tech company comes in with a better EV, or however that rolls out, because we can't predict the future. So, there are a few specific things in this agreement that they won't agree to, I think need to be being negotiated before we could seek approval on this. And, you know, specifically, you know, with, they need to cover the maintenance of that lot. That's great. They're going to pay to pave it and all that ahead of time. We need to make sure we're covered for liabilities. The big thing for me is removal of the equipment. For them to say, we don't have to remove it, I, I want to see a specific timeline. So that at the end of this agreement, if they decide not to continue, or if their company files bankruptcy, or however that goes, we need to know that within 90 days, 180 days, 300, you know, 65 days, whatever that reasonable timeframe is, that they are going to remove that equipment, that we're not allowed to be involved with removal. So that we can use that parcel for public parking or any other piece. Otherwise, we're going to end up with another situation like the Black Butte Saloon where we have what would be a viable, thriving area or, or useful thing for a private business of the city that sits for an indeterminate amount of time. And that, that's my main concern with their lack of refusal here. As far as the comment of we're not in the real estate business, if anybody's familiar with Ray Kroc and how McDonald's, you know, does their business, they make their money on real estate, not selling hamburgers. So, when a, a company of that scope says they're not interested in real estate, that's a huge red flag to me. You know, so, I, I would really like to see this renegotiated for a few key points that's more in favor of the city, especially on a non-rental agreement where we're giving them the land that we purchased for that use.
We're, we're not giving it to them, but we're allowing.
We're allowing them to use, but, you know.
There's no lease. It's a licensing agreement.
It's a licensing agreement for them to be able to utilize that.
And so, I, I think having a defined removal period, should they cease to use that for their charging stations, is more than reasonable for them to agree to. And I think that if we push back on a few of these key items, that they're going to, you know, collaborate with us. They're going to find compromise. Just my thoughts.
He's, he's gone back and forth with the contract or the license agreement.
Do we make any money on the license agreement? Quickly, this is for them to put their.
John had talked to a company called Rivian, but from my understanding, they're having a lot of financial problems. And they're not a business, but they're having some issues. So, no, we, you know, those were the ones that we had approached and, and talked to. I mean, we can go back to the drawing board and try to find another company if you want, but.
Can we just try to negotiate something? Because I'm with Darrell.
Well, give us the specifics of what you want us to negotiate. Just that, okay, just that, is that, is that the big?
We're not really making anything except for tourism, which may be big during certain times of the year and not so big during other times. But, everything's in their favor, not in the city's favor. That's kind of how I saw it, too. I was like, wow.
Well, I wouldn't say everything is in their favor. I mean, I mean, there, there are things like, like the snow removal. If we, you know, do snow removal and we damage our equipment, we should pay for that equipment. You know, I, I agree with them removing that. There's several things that I think are reasonable in there to a degree. My, my big hangup is on the equipment removal. We need a clearly defined amount of time that if they cease to operate, then the clock starts ticking. They have X amount of time. Or we put a lien against that, that equipment, you know.
It's like with someone.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
You know, just like when someone had a business and they had these big 60-foot signs. When that business left, technically, they were supposed to remove that.
We've got a few of those still poking out.
I'm just saying, though, so we don't want that situation to happen if, if something drastic happens like that.
And then, I have a follow-up question, David. As far as the indemnification, they rejected to indemnify the city if a third party is damaged on, on the, my concern there, and, and I'm not, I don't have a juris doctorate, so you're, you're our expert there. My concern there is that if, if a Tesla driver plugs in their EV, and maybe they, you know, visited the smoking lounge or the bar and were irresponsible operators of that vehicle, they electrocute themselves. We don't want the city getting sued. You know, we want to have that indemnification to protect the city because we don't want to engage in a lawsuit, you know, where any EV, you know, owner, you know, and I don't know, I don't have, I don't own a Tesla. I don't know the, the safety measures involved with their charging equipment. But, that, that was a red flag for me as well, is that the city's not, shouldn't be, if, if the hole opens in the ground on our parking lot, I could see where we, we have no indemnification. But as far as the day-to-day occurrences between the Tesla drivers and their equipment, the city should have, you know, no indemnification for that. We should not be a liable party.
So, I think what, I think, you know, if I was representing Tesla, I'm, I think what they would say is, this is just a license agreement. We don't have possession, custody, or control of this parking lot. We don't have the ability to control, we're not in charge of maintenance. You can't make us indemnify you for harm that occurs because someone's on the property. Now, we are agreeing to indemnify you if our trade fixtures harm someone.
Okay. And that's, that's what I'm looking for. As long as we have that, then, then that.
That is in there.
Okay. And that was my other, my other, more of a question than a concern. But, you know, again, my only big thing with this, I'd like to see this go more in favor of the city. The thing holding me up from an approval here is we need to have a specific timeline for removal of that equipment should they cease operation, should that licensure end.
I don't think that's, I don't know what they'll say about that, but.
I mean, I know in my, my lease agreement for my building, when my lease ends, if we don't renew or purchase, then I have X amount of time to get my equipment out. Because, you know, that's just standard business.
But why would they keep it there?
Hard to foresee 15 years in the future.
Right. And, and I think that would be a reasonable accommodation for them to agree to that language change for that one item. I mean, considering all the other concessions we're willing to give them.
They put in, they remove it.
Or they need, you know, and we don't want to be responsible for that removal. I don't think anybody on city staff has the expertise and equipment to remove a charge, supercharging station, should they abandon the property and.
I don't think, I don't think they want us touching.
Right. And I agree. I mean, that's.
Are we shoveling, are we clearing their lot, though?
It would be the same like with what you see down in the shopping center in Mount Shasta. The park, the, the owner of the shopping center is still required to shovel the lot. So, we are, we are required to shovel it, too. So, I mean, it would just be on our list of places to, to do, kind of like we do with the library and some of these other places. So. But.
Do you think it, is this a game breaker? I mean, I, I, how do you feel as far as?
I, I, I don't know. I can go back, but that's what we need is specifics because they're going to go, well, what is it that you want? And it sounds like the removal of the equipment is the biggest thing. I mean, is there anything else? I mean, that's holding this still up?
It was the biggest thing for me.
Okay.
Was that equipment. Thinking, man, we're.
Well, another thing I didn't like with Darrell is that if we get it with the snowplow, that's because we're plowing the lot. That, that's kind of, that's a big.
Well, but that's, but that's what they do down in there. And I guarantee they do the same thing up in Walmart parking lot, too.
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm saying that I'm okay with that because we, I mean, we, we can plow the library and all the city lots and not run into things. And I have every confidence in, in Craig's team that they can plow around a supercharger station.
The smaller.
I mean, and, and, you know, we, we can also put in bollards or something like that as well. So.
They will. They, they've already told us they're going to be putting in those throughout the parking lot.
Yeah. So, I don't see any issue with that. My, like I said, my big thing is we're fighting all of these eyesores and dilapidated buildings in town. And we don't want a potential, you know, biohazard, electrical hazard 20 years from now. I mean, I think Tesla's doing some amazing things. I think they're going to be around for a while. But, you know, we want to protect our, our interest. You know, if they leave, we can use that lot.
Our goal was, was a win-win. We wanted to, because I don't know how long Cliff Chang's lot was sitting out there. But, I, I remember specifically, she was Mayor Tavallaro at the time, when we drove by that lot, she goes, oh my God, we got to do something about that.
Everybody that drives Wider says that.
And that's what we tried to do. So.
But you know, it was Cliff Chang's, but before that, it was Bill's tow. It, it didn't look, it looked worse because it had a bunch of trucks and stuff. I mean, it's always looked that way.
Well, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do a win-win here.
And I think.
Right now, it looks better than it did in 20, for the last 20 years. It's empty.
And I think this whole project and concept's a brilliant idea. You know, they get free parking, so to speak, and we get business customers downtown.
What do you think, 90 to 120 days on the.
Whatever I think is reasonable. You know, I mean, I, I don't have, familiar with supercharging equipment. So, I know dealing with three-phase power for milling and, you know, lathe machines, it can be done in, in a couple, in a couple of days to a couple of weeks.
Yeah. I mean.
You know, we're not rigging up a, you know, five-ton Nomura here, you know, to, to move onto a flatbed. We're talking about a thousand-pound piece of equipment. So, you know, I would.
And you leave the underground infrastructure in there.
Right. So, I mean, I would go back to Tesla and ask them for something reasonable. Obviously, I think 30 days is too short, just because, again, we're remote. But I don't think anything over 180 days makes sense as well. So, somewhere in that 30 to 180 range, I think, you know, to be negotiable.
It sounds like we got our marching orders. And if you want to table this.
Just a quick comment. The, the superchargers are modular in design. So, in effect, when they take them out, they could probably take them out in a day period. It's all 16 of them.
They, they, they told us if we did the dirt work and got everything, you know, got the stuff out, they could bring your crew here and have the entire thing done in two weeks. All, all of it done in two weeks. So.
So, I, then I would, I would, pending further discussion, I would make a motion to approve this with the addendum to the agreement being agreed upon by both parties, the city and Tesla, that the equipment is removed at their cost within 90 days of termination.
authorize Tim to.
Say 90 or 180?
90. You know, if this is a couple, a one-week project or less, which I'd imagine it would be, then I think 90 is more than generous. And authorize the city manager to move forward with that negotiation. So that we're not wasting time that you can, you know, if you can get them to agree.
Are you saying is the motion that if we can get Tesla to agree?
Yes, that's my motion. Yes.
Okay, it's my turn. Any comments from the audience? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got the marching orders. Okay.
Sorry, I know you guys all want to go home, but I just.
I, we'll, we'll probably make this quick. Sorry you showed up, huh, Brian? Staff report?
That's enough. Yeah, all done. I'll try to make it quick. We did lose one sleeper after he graduated from the academy last week. But with that, we also had four of our firefighters graduate the academy last week, which is great. As of today, we brought on our second temporary firefighter for the six-month position. So, now we have those two hired. The FEMA grant-funded position applications close June 5th, and we have to hire that position per FEMA on June 20th. So, that's moving along. Yesterday, we were able to help out at the Kinder Comanata event at College of Siskiess that was around the football field. There's about 300 kindergartners from around the county. There were various spots that they stopped for different careers, things. It was pretty fun. And then, last thing, tomorrow, we have a joint wildland preparedness drill training with South County Fire Departments going over a wide variety of wildland fire training topics tomorrow. That one will be at a property in Mount Shasta.
Hey, that it?
That's it.
I want to thank the fire department and the police department for showing up for Kids Day, by the way. And I didn't, there was, there was a lot of people. Anna?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Well, you had your report on.
I already did. I had my time.
Craig? Esten?
Just that we provided a fentanyl presentation with the Chase Foundation up at the high school. It was received, well-received from what I've been told. So, that's a good thing to get the word out to the kids about the dangers of fentanyl.
And everybody's done Narcan training at the, for the, for the police officers?
We now have Narcan for the officers. It was training through the fire department or provided by the fire department, excuse me. So.
Okay, good. Anymore? That's it? Done? Sandy?
You never.
Jeez, what, are you guys tired or something? It's only 8:30. Tim? David?
Just to let you know, I'll be going to the Cal Cities.
Find a way to get rid of Juarez and you'll get a special reward. Maybe a trip to heaven if it exists.
The annual conference. Yeah, in Sacramento.
Yes, right. Because it was.
Tim, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, real quickly, I just gave everybody the City of Weed sales tax update. This is from fourth quarter of last year. It just, it's, it's just for reading. It just essentially talks about where we get our sales tax. And, and actually, for the fourth quarter, we were up 11.7%, which is good. But it kind of shows, it's kind of interesting reading because it shows where we're getting. And as Councilmember Hall spoke about it, you can see right there, fuel and service stations are, are top producers. And also, that top 25 producers that you see over there, that is not in any, that's in alphabetical order. It's not in any sort of order as, as that. But, it's good. We get these once a quarter. Plan on sharing these. Also, I'm on the board for the Siski media council. And we just got notification yesterday afternoon that we're going to receive a $28,000 grant to upgrade all the servers. Which, what that means is we're going to be taking it kind of to the next level as far as the Siski media council where that will allow us to buy into different streaming services. So, literally, you could be, if you have Roku or one of these streaming services, you could tune in to the Siski media council television station from around the world. And it also will be very, very helpful. And the county and OES is very supportive of this in getting out information in the times of a disaster. Will be very helpful for that as well. So, anyway, just throw that out there to the council. So. And have fun in Monterey. David?
I'm going on vacation next year, I think. I'm just kidding. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We adjourn.
You have to second it here.
Fight over the motion.
Who did? You made the motion?
Mark.
And you do a second? I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home. James?
You know, I think I need to.
Well, they're getting passed down. Did it not get that far?